Both got awfully quiet and I didn't say anything yet. Good afternoon and welcome to the August 25th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. My first request is if you have cell phones, pagers, or similar devices, if you would turn them off or silence them now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you've come to talk to us about a case today, there are sign-up sheets, they look like this, they're on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete it and hand it to us, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And Commissioners, the first order of business is to receive the June 23rd. Pardon me? Never done that. Okay, back to accepting the minutes of 23rd of June, we have a motion and a second.
Under to receive the minutes?
That's been done.
Second?
That's been done. Minutes are accepted. Aubrey, continuance requests?
We have multiple continuance requests today, I'm going to read those and on the date that they are continued, we have three items continued to September 22nd, that would be item B-35 on your agenda for case PC-10-454, item B-36 which is case CPA-2016-2, and B-37 which is case PUD-1614. We also have multiple cases that are going to be deferred to September 8th, which is item B-50 for case C-6831, item 51 which is C-6938, item 52 which is CE-937, item 53 which is CE-940, item 54 which is PC-10-62, item 55 which is PUD-1620, item 56, Plan OKC, item 59 which is the ABC ordinance. Also to be deferred to February 23rd are case items 57 which is for PUD-1581 and 58 which is C-6715, and an item to strike completely is item B-60 which is a sign ordinance.
There is a misprint on the agenda for PUD-1851, it says February 2016, that should be 17?
I think...
Okay, anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of those items, and Ms. Compton, item 54 is included in our vote to continue.
I'm Ms. Compton.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I can move to continue the items.
We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances, cast your votes. Those are approved.
We do have two new requests for continuance that were made for item B-46 for case SPOD-913 to defer to September 8th, and item B-47 for case SPOD-914, also to defer to September 8th.
Anyone come today to talk to us about items 47 or 48 on our agenda?
I think it's 46 and 47. Forty-six and forty-seven.
Oh, 46 and 47, my apologies. And 47. I'll take a motion?
I can move to continue items 46 and 47.
Second a motion.
We have a motion and a second to continue items 46 and 47, cast your votes. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Okay, we'll move to the consent docket, Aubrey?
Okay, we have 18 items on consent. First item is PC-10-458, second item is PC-10-459, the third is PC-10-460, the fourth is PC-10-461, the fifth, PC-10-463, number six is PC-10-464, number seven is PC-10-465, number eight is ABC-864, number nine, ABC-865, number 10, CE-938, number 11, CE-939, number 12 is C-6828, number 13 is C-6832, number 14 is C-67-6827, number 15 is C-6840, number 16 is C-6829, number 17 is C-6837, and number 18 is PUD-SP-1577.
I have, I have an amendment, the consent docket. And I, we are going to amend item number six. It is a rezoning request, and we're going to amend it from R-1 to O-1 instead of from R-1 to I-1.
And that's acceptable with the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else with any comments on items 1 through 18 which were just read?
Move approval of the items on the consent docket?
With the amendment?
With the amendment, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion.
On item number six.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket amending item number six from I-1 to O-1. Cast your votes. And they are approved. I'm going to move item, throw the number at me.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine to the beginning of the docket. There's some people out of town who have an, from out of town who have an airplane to catch, and I'm not sure we would get to them in time if we were to take them in order. So, item 39 will be the first one we hear. Mr. Box?
Item 39 is case C-6833, the final plat of Deer Crest Marketplace located at the northeast corner of North Rockwell and Memorial Road.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. We certainly thank you for your consideration for my clients to be able to get back in time this afternoon. What we have before you is a final plat to allow the development of a Walmart. This is at Rockwell and Memorial Road, there are a handful of TEs, all of which we agreed to. We would ask for your approval and would be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any question or just any?
Yes, I don't believe this will impact it. To my knowledge, this, this doesn't, isn't related to the one on Northwest Highway.
Okay. Any other discussion, Commissioners, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 39, cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved.
Going back to item 19, this is for SN-085, changing the name of Nantucket Road to Branch Alley from North Bryant to Benson Road.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. What we have before you today is a street name change. This commission has had the opportunity to hear a few others recently that were denied. There is a policy in this city to not rename streets, but this falls within one of the exceptions. When you have an institution such as Oklahoma Christian University, they don't have to fall within the same guidelines adopted by the council that other street name changes have to. There was a request by staff that we change from Branch Alley to Branch Road, we are in agreement with that, and so with that, we would ask for your approval.
Is there a significance to Branch? I just, it's...
We've the former president.
Okay, there we go, I knew there was some reason, man. All right, thank you very much.
Is, David, is the former president alive or dead?
He's alive.
Alive.
He'll get to enjoy it.
Regardless of what he does from now on.
Right.
If there are no further questions, we move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19, amending it to Road from Alley, cast your votes.
Thank you.
They're approved.
Item 20 is ABC-862 for an ABC-2 overlay located at 10-740 South May.
Give us your name and address, please.
Dave Zimmer, I'm with the Howssmith Restaurant Group representing Pub W LLC Norman, Oklahoma. I'm 3101 West Tecumseh.
Thank you. Tell us what it is you want to do.
I'm sorry?
Tell us what it is you wish to do here.
This is for an ABC overlay for a Pub W restaurant that we have.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 21 is ABC-863 for an ABC-2 overlay located at 2201 Northwest 150th.
Dave Zimmer, 3101 West Tecumseh, Howssmith Restaurant Group. This is for a double concept that we do not have names for yet, but it's also for an ABC overlay.
We all know the Howssmith Group, no one has signed up?
I have a crossing guard there to get those people, 5 o'clock.
Who wanted to curse that?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21, cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item 22 is SPOD-907 to rezone 2624 Southwest 74th from R-1 to SPOD-907.
Clay Colarn, Broadway Development Group representing the applicant. I believe the staff has reviewed our application, I think we've satisfied the staff, and so we request your approval.
Again, no one signed up, Commissioners?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 22, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 23 is SPOD-910 to rezone 1419 through 1425 Northwest 29th from R-1 to SPOD-910.
Asa Highsmith, 430 Northwest 12th. I am representing the applicant, Jefferson Park Neighborhood Association. We are consolidating two existing residential R-1 lots to put in six new small lot homes for purchase in the Plasmin Boulevard area, and...
And you're moving around.
What is that?
And you're moving around. You're moving around.
Jefferson Park.
Out of Jefferson Park.
Oh, yeah, 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 gotcha. Yes, sir, we are.
I've met, or talked to, I guess, have we met? Yeah, we did, we met on site, I remember, that blazing hot day, just looks across the street into a giant sea of asphalt. You were going to improve the alley, right, that you're taking access from the one that's on the east side of the property?
So, understanding is that we have to improve the alley to bring it up to standard? The expectation is that we would improve the alley next to our property and not all the way through to 28th, is that correct?
Yeah, I assume so.
Okay, that's our understanding.
You're only interested in your access, so...
Correct.
This is, this is one of those kind of unique little pocket neighborhood things that are popping up here in the air. I think this is a good use for this property, although I'm definitely not a proponent of tearing down existing housing, I think the, in this particular case, that the existing housing may be beyond salvation, so... Is there anybody who's signed up to be heard on this matter?
There's someone in support, but none in opposition.
So, will you be happy if I just move to approve it?
I only take up two or three minutes of your time. My name's John Pro, my wife Carrie's in the back. We're 1512 Northwest 29th Street. We're longtime residents, we've lived here for 20 years, we own three properties within one block of the proposed area. We have been trying to improve the neighborhood for five or six years, we've been working with Neighborhood Alliance, we've been recognized by Neighborhood Alliance for the work that we have done. We throw a block party every year, we have anywhere from 80 to 100 people show up, and we welcome this proposal. We, it's going to breathe new life into our neighborhood, and it, we're encouraged to see the redevelopment. The property that they're talking, tearing down, has been empty for six or seven years, graffiti on it, grass grows this high before the city has someone come and mow it, we have transients who live in it, we are very excited about this property. Thank you.
There was one other thing I did want to say about it, they're, they're going to make use of the permeable paving on the interior, right, not on the exterior, but, or not driveways, but walkways and...
The plan is only for the parking spaces and not for the drives, the drives will be paved, but where the cars themselves park on each individual property would be a permeable surface.
And I know this is something that staff is kind of working on, and they're sort of developing some new standards for that, and this is a good thing, so this will be just another little trial balloon going up. So, if nobody else wants to be heard, I'm going to move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 23, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 24 is PC-10-457 to rezone 812 Northwest 87th Street from R-1 to I-1.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of Garrett and Company. There are two members of Garrett family here with me today. This is an area that's in transition, zoned R-1, it's surrounded by some vacant properties, but also surrounded by some industrial uses. What we propose is I-1 with, and we do have some images of what we propose, an office warehouse type use. If you've driven through there, this is a use that is prevalent in the area, we think it's an appropriate use based upon the nature of the area, and we would ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
I'm off.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 24, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 25 is PUD-1616 to rezone 12-108 South Hiwacy Road from AA to PUD-1616.
Charles Allen, Allen Engineering, Tiffany and Chris Howard are here, one of the people that want to move to this private subdivision. This is a 20-acre tract that doesn't measure actually 20 acres, so by the time we try to divide it up, we have to go through PED process. We're trying to get four lots, three of which will be five acres, one will be slightly less than five acres, by the time you take out the right-of-way, it'll be 4.7 acres. We also have one lot that may or may not have a, we've got, we've got an aunt, sister-in-law, mother, no, I'm sorry, mother-in-law, sister, and the Howers that want to move out here and have a family subdivision, so...
We're essentially now going to divide roughly 20 acres into roughly four...
Correct.
Okay, so it's not the two-and-a-half acre request that we had before?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
In, in taking out the two-and-a-half acres, we've added two more.
So, essentially, we're back to what the staff report would have been in July, which would have been a recommendation for approval, so, and no one has signed up?
Well, there's a couple of questions I've got on the thing, and I'm a little confused. It says in the document that we've got that it consists of four lots, three of, or five acre lots, and I only see two that's five acre lots on the, on the plat.
I think you've got the, the first one had two, two-and-a-half acres in the front.
Yeah, well, the first one, the first one is two-plus acres, right? The first one off the road.
First one, the, the latest plan is to have a five acre tract in the front there, track one.
The July report would show...
Track one is, is a little over two acres, track two is two acres.
Jim, you're looking at the July...
I'm looking at that...
I'm looking at one that has four lots.
That's what I've got, too.
Four lots.
I'm looking at the one on the screen.
But, he says three of them are five acre tracks.
And one is 4.7, so there, there's nothing, nothing smaller than 4.7.
And the 4, 4.7 is a result of taking out the 33-foot statutory and an additional 17-foot of right-of-way that, that's on track one, so we've squeezed everything in to the center, 4.7 acres.
So, you're going to, track one and track two is going to be combined?
On, yes, on the one that had the...
If you're looking at the old report, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I must be, but that, that's what in my, what's in my packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that's on the screen.
Another, another question I've got, too, is the way the road goes down through there?
Correct.
Is, the road is going to be taken away from the actual square footage of that lot, is that right?
No, not, it's a, it's a private access...
Okay, and will that owner own both sides of the road?
It's a private access easement, the owner of that lot will own the road, but it'll be a private access easement through that lot.
Let me see your... That's what I've got.
Okay, well, those aren't two-and-a-half acres on the front, they're five and almost five.
The document's not completely correct because it still does have the reference to the point of beginning of track two, so that probably should be deleted, but if you delete that, then the whole track one, I think, makes, makes sense, like you're saying, Jimmy, because it still does have that reference to the point of beginning of track two, so, in the map, so that I could see where that confusion would arise.
Yeah.
So, there is no point of beginning of track two in track one, right, Charles?
It should be that northeast corner, beginning of track two.
Right.
A track.
You could see that in track one, though, see that on the map?
I see that now, yes, well, I should delete that.
Yeah. Well then...
So, we're all on the same page now?
I think I am.
No one signed up?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 25, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 26 is PUD-1617 to rezone 2300 Northeast 122nd from R-1 and AA to PUD-1617.
Good afternoon, I'm Brandon Tatum, President of Oklahoma Christian Academy, and I'm here for our requested acceptance of PUD on 2300 Northeast 122nd Street. Our current address is 1101 East 9th Street in Edmond, and our desire is to build a school building on the property. We have looked at the city recommendations, we fully intend to meet all of the engineering and wastewater requirements, also the city requested that we have an eight-foot sign, and therefore we intend to meet the eight-foot sign requirements. And we don't have any questions at this time, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, Brian, can you tell me again where you're currently located?
Yeah, we are in Edmond, Oklahoma, on 9th Street between Bryant and Boulevard.
I may have misunderstood, did you mention the signage?
Yes.
For your property, and you're agreeing to the eight-foot signs?
I'm agreeing to the eight-foot.
On that point, you understand we're not the ones who want you to have the eight-foot sign, if you don't want a sign, they'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
It's just that if you had a sign, we don't want it.
Yeah, we need a sign.
I think this is a really good upgrade to that area, they've got a neighborhood that's supposed to be going in, they've had a few problems, but it makes sense, and so I think it's a good, good, good project, so... Any other comments? Can we move for adoption?
Well, we've got two people signed up, one of whom's before us.
Oh, we have two people signed up, okay.
You're Mr. Tatum, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jeff Bingham?
He's with me.
I kind of thought that he might be, so I don't think, I think if we're going to go ahead and approve it, he's probably happy not to spend time at the mic.
I hope he's happy.
Go ahead.
Yeah?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 26, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 27 is SPOD-906 to rezone 116 North Klein from I-2 and R-3 to SPOD-906.
Hello, I'm Ken Fitzsimmons of Test Design, and my address is 1228 Northwest 36th. I'm here on behalf of my client, Josh Livingston, and we'd like to propose that we make the property rezone to a spud to allow building up to the property line like the neighboring buildings, it's an industrial area along Main that all of the older buildings tend to be built to the property lines, and we'd like to have that same ability, and currently the downtown parking overlay, which does not require parking, stops on the south side of Main, and we would like to ask for some leniency on parking as well, the intent is to create a more vibrant mixed-use type development here.
Commissioners, discussion, no one signed up?
I have some questions about your project, and, and not that I don't respect your work, I do, and so, and that's where I've been encouraged about what may or may not happen here, but it, it could be an urban garden, it could be among probably 30 or 40 uses, whatever is, whatever, so the uncertainty of what goes in there is of a little bit concern, but, you know, it's a, it's a vacant lot, there's, there's no building on it, so you've, so what would, and there's nothing in here about architecture, about, you've just got blocks, you know, square blocks.
Right, we do, we did have a, some verbiage in there about the acceptable materials and the building heights, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
But here, but here's my, I mean, the encouragement of that particular stretch of Oklahoma City from Western on West to Pennsylvania, you've got an anchor now, 21C, and that development is going to go across the street if it happens, you're a block away from that, you know, so you have that 21C, it's really kind of a, an urban example of courage to renovate the Fred Jones Building, and then you go down the road, and then at the end of it, towards the end, you've got Rand Elliott's concept of some two-story modern thing that's going to be, maybe be built on the north side of the street, so you've got two potential anchors, and also, in that part of Main Street, there are commercial businesses that are doing their best to make those businesses look better and improve that whole Main Street, that West Main activity. I hope you guys do the same thing, I mean, because these uses, you can do anything, I mean, just name it and you can do it.
Right, the intent is definitely to do something a little bit more special than, you know, just putting together a beige metal box, and my client, Josh, could speak to that a little bit about his ideas here, he actually has some businesses and properties along Main Street, and this has been a long time coming for him, and the intent is to create something that would also give something back to the city, and the notion of, we're still in the conceptual phases, but maybe some sort of a, you had mentioned community garden, there might be something that is a little bit of a landscape that's not necessarily required, but we'd like to do to make it a little bit nicer, also like to try to do something that integrates with the street and not just, not just become a sea of parking there, the conceptual site plan that we submitted suggests that we'd like to put the parking behind the building and create more of an urban edge, one of the concepts that we're working with now would actually create a court area in between the street and the parking, so it creates, makes the building a little bit more scaled down and gives a little bit more of a, of a softer...
That's what I was saying, and I like the application because you're putting the buildings up on the street and then parking's in behind, a thing, John, that we tried to get at Grecktown over and over and over, that's, you know, and particularly in this area, it belongs, you know, it belongs as storefronts come in, so with a great deal of trust in what you guys come up with...
Bob, would you feel better if they limited some of this?
The, the point is, is that, you know, that you can have an urban farm, you know, this is a, this is a blank thing, and then whatever happens, you know, dealership and malls, like automobile and equipment dealership, you know, you may be able to do that, you know, a little bit of thing, it's such a, it's, it's such a, who knows what goes on there, and the zoning is, what we have, is it I-2, you know, so the zoning's already there to do a lot of bad stuff, but they're, they're agreeing to put whatever buildings on the street side, which doesn't make it conducive to an automobile dealership with the cars out in front, you've kind of limited certain things that you can do, so a great deal of trust in the reputation of your firm, I move approval.
Aren't we going to talk about non-accessory signs? Aren't we going to talk about non-accessory signs? Non-accessory signs under, under the items that are listed, I think the discomfort perhaps with this, with this application, where it's unusual for us to see a PUD or SPOD request that has this many uses that are permitted in it, I mean, this is just really a laundry list, and that's not our usual way of doing as... I mean, this is just really a laundry list, and that's not our usual way of doing SPDs.
Right. The intent was, we started with the I-2 uses, and we did limit or took out some uses that were not conducive to the site at all, but we did wanna keep in the flexibility.
You understand, when we are doing SPDs and PUDs, that's a negotiated zoning, and so, we're always interested in what we're getting out of it.
Sure, sure.
I mean, you have the zoning you have, and you can live with that, but if you're going to do an SPUD in order for you to limit your parking, then I think, you know, that customarily, we see, you know, some give and take, and the number of uses here really is just, like Commissioner Bright said, I mean, it's just, it's virtually everything, one of which, I note, is signs non-accessory, i.e. a billboard. And even though it says later in the staff report that non-accessory signs are not permitted, it is in fact listed as a permitted use. So, I, you know, I'm...
Wait, I forgot that one. Absolutely not. No billboards.
I think we're fine with the...
I'll resend my vote for approval. No billboards.
I'm also... Doesn't I-2 allow for outdoor storage? Staff? Yes, it does. That's just problematic, I think. I'm a little uncomfortable with this application.
Janice, this, you know, I mean, my first comment was going to be, I don't wanna negotiate the elimination of the uses. My statement was gonna be, you come back, tell me what you're going to eliminate, because there's a lot in here. Funeral services, I mean, you... Everything, the kitchen sink is in here. That was my first comment. If you didn't do an SPUD, you have one lot that's R-3, one little lot over there at the corner. The whole corner is I-2. That's Katie Bar the door, you know? So, it's... I didn't wanna negotiate...
It is currently I-2 also. I mean, let's be clear, you've got a little bit of R-3 in there, but the bulk of the property is I-2.
Everything surrounding it now essentially is zoned I-2.
Right.
Which...
I mean, I wouldn't mind getting rid of outdoor storage and certainly the billboard.
And it is an area that is...
Well, it's transitioning away from I-2 to something better, which is...
And I'm guessing that you have a better vision for this property than is represented by this list of uses.
I think we didn't want...
Tell us who you are first, please.
I'm sorry, Josh Livingston, I'm the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to hand these out? So, I've been working on this property for five years. I've been on West Main Street for 10 years. I own several other buildings. My primary business is on West Main. So, the purpose of the rezoning was to allow this property to truly be an urban property, to allow them to move the building up to the street. The reason that we've designed buildings along Klein is to let this development wrap the corner. So, we've spent a lot of time and money to do this correctly. Maybe the site plan doesn't do it justice if you're not used to looking at those every day. When I was asked by Ken on the uses, we all know what we're gonna use the building for, it's office and retail, but I was just asking to get CBD allowances regarding parking and how we wanted to situate the building on the street. See, the purpose in trying to nail down exactly what the use was gonna be, because we already have I-2 zoning, which is, as you know, very flexible, so...
Well, and I don't think anybody has any problem at all with you moving the building up.
We can't afford to build the building and use it as a car lot or a funeral service place.
So, then, it would be a simple thing to eliminate those uses from your application. I don't think anybody wants you to say it's going to be an architect's office. I just think if you know the uses that you're gonna make of the property, it's a fairly simple thing to specify those.
You know, whenever you're at-risk development, you're just trying to leave it as flexible as possible and not nail yourself in. As all of you know, the west side of downtown is kind of the frontier, so while we know things are moving there, there's also, the future's uncertain, so...
And I think a certain level of flexibility would be appropriate. I think this is too much.
So, Janice is saying lead, don't follow, I think.
I guess from my point of view, we have less allowed usage now than I currently do. Our application is eliminating uses that I currently have. So, today, I could go build something that none of us want to see built. I could go get a permit right now for a car lot. So, our application is improving and restricting the site versus keeping it as it is right now, which is something that none of us probably wanna see.
Well, these renderings, is this what we're gonna see, or is this not what we're gonna see when I look at this?
That's what we're currently pricing. Yeah, that's... Ken and I have been working on this, going on five years together, so we've just kind of been waiting for the neighborhood to come around.
And I don't, again, I don't think anybody has any problem with that, or really with what you're proposing. I just think that we, we are used to having PUDs and S-PUDs that specify, not completely eliminating your flexibility, but that are a little more narrowly drawn than this is.
I appreciate that. It's not like I'm taking a property that's, you know, zoned one way, I'm going backwards. I'm moving the property forward. I currently, like I said, I mean, currently, something could happen there now, under existing zoning, that we don't wanna see happen. So, by doing this, we're pushing the property in the right direction.
But clearly, you wanna do something with it that's not allowed now, or you wouldn't be here.
No, I think the way zoning is now, I can't build an urban building there, and so, we don't wanna see a parking lot off Main Street. We don't wanna see a building step back 50 feet, and that's how it would be currently.
Well, and I think, nor do we wanna see those things, but I think what we do wanna see, what I would like to see, is an SPD that's a little more narrowly drawn than the one we have in front of us.
Which items would you like to see eliminated?
Well, we don't generally do that around the horseshoe during a meeting. I'd be happy to meet with you and sit down between now and our next meeting, if you'd like to continue the case.
I think there's clearly two. We don't want a billboard there.
We don't wanna put a... I thought we put the signage...
Billboard's still in.
That must be a typo.
Okay, I mean, no, due respect. So, billboard's still in. I know we don't want that. I mean, there are several significant uses here that... I get your point. It's not at all lost on me. So, that's one I can speak to, speaking only for myself.
But as to Janice's point, it's not fair to the rest of the people in the room that we sit here and negotiate uses across the horseshoe.
Sure.
I think I would ask you to take a two-week continuance to September 8th, sit down with Janice, and Bob, it's his ward, go through the uses, and at least narrow those that probably would be objectionable.
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
The comment that you made, though, and I just... This is how my analysis of this was, with one exception, that R-3 that's there in the corner. On this corner, on Main Street, is I-2. It's, it's everything, you know? And so, there, with the exception of the billboard, which is an absolute no-go, you know, that's just, you're never gonna have that. I looked at these and then imagined what this would be without the benefit of this, but there's also an urban garden proposed, you know? I mean, and that could happen on this lot, you know? Whatever... I can't imagine you doing that, because I'm not sure of what rent you could get out of a cabbage, but you have the right to do that. But, so, my comment was, okay, let's see what happens. And I think that I made a mistake. I think the mistake was, let's move back. You guys really, really look at it, and, you know, what's marketable, what's not. If you've been working on this for a long time, you're not gonna put something down there and install something that's gonna be a loser. You've got two... You've got a really valuable piece of property potential, finally, after all these years, going down west on Main Street, with a 21C hotel kind of anchoring that side. And you, so, I would like to see just exactly what's suggested. Come back on this... Let's have a meeting, you know, as soon as you can, and we can go through this stuff, and we can get together, you and I and Janice, and then, you know, take out the stuff that really, you think, are we really gonna do that? No, we're really not. You know, we're gonna do something entirely different, hopefully winding up with something like this. I appreciate your efforts, though, in making this on a, on a street side, parking in the back. I think that's all great, and I trust your architectural firm, and, but just the uses of what you're gonna do here, it's a, it's an exercise of, let's get together and maybe scrunch it down a little bit, and then you won't have any problems. Okay? Okay?
I'll take a motion to continue us to...
So, moved.
Second.
That's to September 8th, by the way. Cast your votes, and it's continued.
Just an update on the temperature in the room. I know it's warm in here. We've been trying to contact building management to get them to turn the air down, just to let you know. Help is on the way. Item 28 is SPUD 908, rezone 1300 Northwest 10th from R-3 to SPUD 908.
Good afternoon, my name is Perry Hudson, 6301 Winslet in Choctaw. I am one of the applicants, along with Jason Spanic. As the agenda points out, we're asking to rezon from R-3 to a spud 908. Our intended use would be for a small law office. I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns. Otherwise, I would just ask for your support in our application.
No one signed up, commissioners?
Approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 28. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item 29 is C-6826, the preliminary plat, excuse me, of Westminster Heights 1, located south of Northwest 50th and east of Northwestern.
Good afternoon, this is Ernie Ish with Ish and Associates, 14848 Bristol Park Boulevard. I have with me Derek Turner, president of Turner and Company, who's the manager of Project 43, the applicant. We concur with the TEs and ask for your approval.
And no one signed up?
No one signed up? This is an item that we really kind of went through when we rezoned it, so unless anybody has anything they'd like to add, I'm just gonna move for approval. Move approval.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 29. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 30 is SP 486, to operate an automobile dealership located at 601 West Hefner Road.
Hi, Malik Masid, 100 East California, Unit 450 Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73104. Currently, it's zoned PUD 408, lots for C-3 zoning with two industrial uses added, automotive equipment, heavy repairs and heavy equipment and automotive and equipment storage. So, we already have a heavier use. We're asking for sales use. So, we also agree with all the staff recommendations, the three items on there, and we will agree to those as well.
Okay. Again, commissioners, no one signed up? Just go. We have a motion and a second to approve item 30. Cast your votes, that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 31 is SP 487, to operate a high-impact institutional use at 14820 Serenita Avenue.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson and Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. As many of you will recall, we spent a great deal of time rezoning this overall tract of land, of which this is a small piece of. And at the time we rezoned that, we, this particular tract that this is in is, was zoned for office. You've seen the plat for a proposed office park, and one of the anchor uses is a college. And so, to get that done, we have to have this special use. You've approved on the consent docket the site plan approval for this building. I'd be happy to answer any questions. No TEs.
Okay, commissioners, no one signed up? Discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve item 31. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item 32 is PUD 1618, rezone 7228 North Claussen Boulevard from I-2 to PUD 1618.
Again, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. David Bohannon is also here, who's one of the owners of the property, or that's before you. As you'll recall, about a month ago, the staff presented a plan change for this tract of land to really allow this mixed-use development to come forward. We made the application for this PUD quite some time ago and have worked with the staff. We have one TE for engineering uses, are meeting the engineering requirements, and we agree with that. We've met with Ms. Powers and discussed this over a period of time. It was, it's truly a mixed-use development that intends to mix, you know, three or four different kinds of uses, including multifamily and office and residential, as well as some unique uses like the office warehouse that we're calling a man cave concept, which allows for people to store valuable cars and things like that.
I think we may need to add a use unit for man caves.
Probably not politically correct.
We have, we have met, we have texted, we have talked, we have emailed, and I'm, I'm still scratching my head over this one just a little bit. I'm very curious to see how it works out. It just seems like such an odd mixture of uses at this particular location, but since not any one of them is anything that I would object to here, I... Is there anybody who's...
No one signed up?
I'm of approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 32. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 33 is SPUD 909, rezone 13040 Northwest 10th from C-3 to SPUD 909.
Malik Alcory, I'm the applicant, 1435 East 41st Street in Tulsa. I am representing the developer for this site. We are proposing a collision works use, projects, and we just finished a sample in Broken Arrow, and he's got multiple sites in around the city. We have prepared some exhibits and pictures of the proposed building, if any of you would like to take a look at it, and I'm here to answer any question if you have.
Okay. If you'd go back to the microphone, that way, everything that you say is recorded, so people who watch this on TV...
All right, yeah. This building will be used for repair of damaged cars. All the work will be done inside the building. There'll be no noise. We will meet the city requirements for site lighting and for stormwater management and anything that's required by the city. The site will be fenced in. All the cars will be placed inside a fenced area.
Mr. Alcory and I had a wonderful discussion about this while we thought we were talking about something else entirely. But it sounds to me like a kind of a unique concept in body shops, and, you know, since everything is indoors and behind the fence and sort of protected, it sounds to me like a positive project.
Thank you.
No one has signed up. The only thing we have is one letter in your packet.
Right. When you mentioned plat, which area are you talking about?
On 10th Street, it would be east of Cemetery Road. And it looks like you're really looking at...
Yeah, this side is just west of Aldi and Sunny.
Right.
That was a previous application.
I have a question before, but in the sped, the summary of the sped application in the, in our materials, under a conditional use unit, you will allow non-accessory signs. But further on, reading this thing, you say on non-accessory signs, they are specifically prohibited.
Actually, we will have one sign on 10th Street that we have...
You want a billboard?
We do not want a billboard, no.
That's what, that's what that means, non-accessory sign.
Yeah, we have no use for billboards.
Your signage will relate to what's being done on that site, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that's an accessory sign.
Yeah.
Whatever's there. And then, the other thing, do you agree with the TE about EMD signs?
Electronic signs? We actually have requested that we, a non-flashing electronic sign, and I believe staff, we're going to put that in the report, just because the sign that we have, you have the collision works on top, and then you have a message right below it that does not flash. Scroll, if we can control the scrolling on it, or that's...
So you don't agree with the TE?
Well, I have spoken to staff, and I asked him to add that to the report, that we would like to have an electronic messaging board. Well, it's your wish. If the council... I would like to have one if there's any way we can get it. Can I visit with the developer for a second?
Yeah, yeah. Not likely from this body, but go ahead. So that's already there, is that right? It looks to be like. See, look at all these signs. That's what they...
Okay, if this body would not allow the sign, we will agree to it. But we ask for approval if we can get it.
Okay, well, your motion would include no non-accessory signs and no EMD sign.
Okay.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 33 as amended with no EMD signs and no non-accessory signs. Cast your votes. You're approved.
Thank you.
Item 34 is C6830, the final plat of Kingsbridge Estates located south of Southwest 104th and west of South Council.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. This is a final plat that conforms to the approved preliminary plat. There are five TEs that we're in agreement with, and we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up, commissioners? Move for approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 34. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you.
Items 35, 36, and 37 were continued. Item 38 is V.A. 24650. It's a lot split deed approval located at 6,000 West Memorial Road. Does require variance to the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Love. My address is 6301 Waterford Boulevard, Suite 320, Oklahoma City, Law Firm of Cheek and Falcone, and I am the attorney for the applicant, Mathis Westlake LLC. I'm here to answer any questions that the commission may have. A note that the city, as staff has said, that this would require two variances, and we agree with the staff's assessment and request approval if there are no questions.
Commissioners, no one has signed up, and this will require two variance votes and an application. Make a motion on variance one. We have a motion, second to approve the variance to T number one. Cast your votes. That's approved. Motion on variance two. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE two. Cast your votes. A motion on the application. A motion to approve item 38 in case we need it. Cast your votes and it's approved. You're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've already heard case 39, so number 40 is C6835, the preliminary plat of Savannah Estates, Section 3, located north of West Memorial and west of North County Line.
Tim Johnson, Johnson Associates, on behalf of the applicant. This is a remaining tract of land that was part of a development about 10 years ago that we were involved with. Savannah Estates, Section 1 and 2, to the south of us, have been developed and homes are being built. This is a leftover piece to the north that had gone back to the bank, and that's why it's sat so long. What we're asking for is this preliminary plat to basically mimic what was previously approved. There were some utilities installed as part of the development to the south originally, and we're adhering to those. We have five TEs, and we agree with all of them.
Again, no one signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 40. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item 41 is S.P.U.D. 912 to rezone 2113 South Mustang Road from AA to S.P.U.D. 912.
Hello again. Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant. This is a little S.P.U.D. site, and the developer would like to put it into two tracks because the uses are slightly different between what he wants to develop for himself and what he wants to allow to be developed for a sale of a secondary tract. The site plan that we provided to the city had a shared driveway at the lot split area, which could very well be built that way. However, in the P.U.D., we asked that the property be allowed to have two driveways. There's an existing two driveways there now. We meet the separation recommendation of the traffic plan with the two driveways. So that's really the only issue on TE number three that we have a problem with, other than that we agree with the TEs.
Well, Tim, the discussion I had with traffic earlier is they wanted to keep the single access point, and they were concerned that they would not be able to obtain the required separation.
Well, we would be happy to...
I'm the messenger. I'm reporting what I was...
I'd be happy to add the language that if there are more than one driveway, they'd be separated by at least 200 feet.
Is traffic back there? I'd like to hear that once again.
Yeah, Tim, that's really my biggest concern with this application is if you've driven Mustang Road recently, at certain times of the day, it's a madhouse. And that area right there is one of the worst areas. So the less, I think when we add two access points versus one, I think we just create another point of uncertainty there where we've got more people entering and exiting there. So I like the idea of one access point better, but I, you know, that's just a concern that I have.
And the concern the developer has is if he chooses to sell the tract and for some reason a cross-access can't be achieved, he'd like to have the ability to have each track have their own driveway. We believe we can meet the 200-foot separation without a problem.
What's the speed limit there? 50 and 200 feet? 200 feet and 50, and that's not going to work.
It's either 50 or 55 in there, although I know ODOT, it is a state highway, and ODOT's going to have to eventually approve it one way or the other. But the drawing shows one driveway, and the document shows two, and we thought with access management, as shown in the comp plan, that it should only have the one.
Okay. But the separation per se is not an issue, then?
I don't recall how wide the site is.
It's over 400 feet.
I'm sorry?
It's over 400 feet, just under 500 feet.
Separation's always, you'd have to design it, the driveway separation, but again, you're creating more conflict points on a high-speed roadway and for people to turn into.
We don't have any opposition, obviously, on the other side because of the nature of the golf course.
So would there not be any requirement for deceleration and acceleration lanes?
That would be a requirement from the Department of Transportation. It's their road.
Do I understand, from what I'm looking at here, there are already two driveways there?
Yeah, there's currently two drives you can see on the aerial. Much closer together.
First of all, there's nothing there.
Okay.
Okay?
It's been vacant.
There's a driveway that turned into a house that used to be there.
I see.
And there's a little barn sitting there. So technically, I don't remember two driveways, but maybe there is. I don't remember seeing two driveways, but there's nothing there, literally. It's just a little barn, so.
It's not serving any current use. Current use has been demolished. When ODOT expanded Mustang Road, they left the returns there where they were historically placed.
Well, Buck, I'm with you. I think a lot more comfortable with one than two at this point.
With the traffic issues we're already having... With the traffic issues we're already seeing there, I just, that's just a big concern for me.
Well, we're going to have a bit of a traffic discussion on the case coming up later in the agenda, and safety is...
Right.
...my concern there, too, and I'll explain why.
Other than that, I don't have any issue with the application. I'm fine with it.
So if we agree with TE number three, we're good to go? Kind of like the other gentleman, we'd prefer to have two driveways. I hear you.
Yeah. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'll move for approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 41, including all three TEs. Cast your vote and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 42 is S.P.U.D. 915 to rezone 1700 Northwest 17th from S.P.U.D. 863 to S.P.U.D. 915.
Hi, I'm Steve Hurst. I'm the developer, 3901 Red Deer Crossing, Edmund. This is an existing apartment complex in the Plaza District, which had been used for a convalescent home for a decade or so. When we purchased it, we had intention, originally, we're going to allow the use by foster kids. However, with the state funding cuts, we were unable to get our allocations, and therefore, I'm just going to turn it into apartments and do the original plan. Staff has reviewed it, and if you have any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Do you agree with the TEs and the application? I have no problem with this. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 42. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 43 is C6834, the preliminary plat of Brookfield Estates located west of North MacArthur and south of 164th. Also does require a variance to the subregs.
David Box, 52 Culdeus Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Chris Anderson, the civil engineer for the project. This is a preliminary plat for a project where the P.U.D. came before you several months ago. We do need a variance on the length of the cul-de-sac. If you look at the image before you, due to the shape of this tract, there's no other way to develop that, the southwest portion of it unless we exceed that length. We are exceeding the length by about 300 feet. So this is an identical development plan that was showed to the planning commission during the P.U.D. process, so we would ask for your approval of the variance as well as the preliminary plat.
David, I think you're probably going to need to make some adjustments first. The common area, if I understand it, is right at 164th Street at the entrance. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's our detention area.
And where is the common area which will have amenities then?
Well, we're going to have sidewalks, but the amenity will be there, but what we have here in this large development type of home is you have larger lots, you have more space for people to have their own amenities.
You're required to have open space in this, a common area in this project. Is that correct?
I believe what we show is compliant with the zoning as well as the subregs.
That's not compliant with what we intended for common areas to be.
Well...
We specifically don't want common areas along the entrances and on a main road.
Sure. You know, typically, we're dealing with much larger developments, and I understand and appreciate the concern. Here, you have more of a small enclave of homes rather than the large-scale development that you're going to generate the need for centralized pocket parks. It is my belief that what we have before you is compliant with both the zoning and the subdivision regulations.
But not with the planning commission policy with respect to common areas?
I'm not sure. The staff has not addressed any deficiencies in our plat.
Just looking at the staff report, I think you're short on the acreage, barely, to be fair, but it says it's a requirement, so...
Could you help me?
Is it not a requirement? Looking at page seven, down at the Development Services comment...
Okay. Yeah, so we can tweak it to meet the size.
Well, it's not going to get my vote if you're tweaking...
But that doesn't get to the second part with respect to the amenities, right? And the timing of the construction. That's the point that John's raising.
Well, and we've had discussions before, and you've both been present when those discussions have been had. We want common areas where they're accessible to all of the residents, where they don't create some sort of a safety issue. And common areas at the entrance to the neighborhood create a safety issue. If I'm a parent and I've got children and I'm down on the south end, I'm not going to send them up to the corner to play.
Sure.
And that's the point of common areas.
One of the issues you have, though, when you have a very small development, you don't have the available land to just rip out lots in the middle of a development to make it work. So when you have a smaller development, you don't see the centralized common area like you might see in the development immediately south. If you look at the screen, you have your more typical single-family development where you have the opportunities to put them in central locations.
Simply does not meet the intent of what we want common areas to be.
Does it apply to developments under 20 acres?
Sure.
Perhaps my understanding that it does not.
It does.
Because I don't see it called out as a deficiency again, so we don't need a variance. And so without needing a variance, it means we've met the subregs.
That's not the only test.
We'll take a two-week continuance and get with staff and see if we can find the requirement that, if it's codified, that we'll meet it.
While you're taking the time, would you, you made the statement that you thought that this was the only way this piece of property could be developed, but I don't see why it can't be, why the circulation pattern can't be circular, why it can't come down and around and back out, rather than to end in a cul-de-sac the way it does.
We don't have the width on 164th, and we don't own that notch out.
I know. I mean, as it is, as it is. I'll give you my drawing. So while you're taking two weeks, you might look at that.
That would, I can answer that. 18 and 19 are large lots, and that would, all of a sudden, you're getting rid of those two lots, and those are...
That was the whole purpose of the P.U.D. application, was for those lots to be that way.
Otherwise, we would have just had straight R1 zoning and been here on the plat today.
That is the same layout that was on the P.U.D. application.
Well, we'll take the two weeks and get with staff.
I think you need to look at the design again, not just go look for some specific regulation. Take a look at what you can do with this.
Okay.
John, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Where is it written down?
We have a policy that came out of lots of discussion about common areas.
And that policy has been published and written for us, so developers can go to meetings and...
Well, maybe I'm the only one who thinks it exists.
And I'm not trying to argue, but I do not believe it's a codified regulation.
I mean, we went through a long discussion process to come up with common areas and what they were intended to be and what amenities were included within them, and that's been put into the open space regulations.
Is it from a longer place where a developer can go look and see if it's written down?
Well, I guess we'll find out in the next two weeks, but we went to an awful lot of trouble and had long discussions with the development and home builder community about the fact that we needed open space within these...
I agree with your concept. I'm not arguing with your concept. All arguing, discussing, discussing.
The fact that it's not written down someplace where a developer can go find it and, you know, comply with whatever your thoughts are.
I recall more than what I'm hearing now.
We have had many discussions about this. I did not...
I'm sure you've had. I'm not arguing with the...
I do not recall that it resulted in the adoption of any policies...
Okay. That's my point is, how do we expect the developers to go ahead and follow these instructions if all are in our mind?
Well, then, we need to do that.
We have, we have the provision in the subdivision regs that is, that is the regulation about open space and recreational areas. We were working on amendments to the subdivision regs at one point that did not carry forward, that did not result in a subdivision regulation amendment that defined where the common areas would be located, but many discussions to take place. So at this point, I don't think we have anything other than what's in the subregs to really point to.
Well, we've moved them around in other applications in the past, very specifically when they showed up right at the entrance on a high-speed road where all the traffic took place, and they've been, they've been relocated.
And that's accurate. This, this is just a different situation because of the size. It's less than ten acres, and so.
Doesn't eliminate the danger that's created by putting it where you're putting it.
We'd, we'd be happy to take two weeks, but I, I don't believe that, I don't think we're going to find anything. So what we have before us is a plat that conforms to the, to the regs other than the, the length.
You're being technical but not cooperative and not doing something that really is good for people.
Well, let us go back and talk to the developer and, and see what we can do.
Okay.
And we'll come back in two weeks.
We'll see you on September eighth. Continuance on item thirty, forty-three for two weeks. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item forty-four is PUD sixteen nineteen to rezone fifteen six twelve Northwestern Avenue from R-one's to PUD sixteen nineteen.
You're going to see me quicker than two weeks. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Bill Roberts, who's the developer of the site, and Ernie Ish, who's the civil engineer. This is a development that will be similar in quality and design to Muirfield Village in Edinburgh. Many people have come up to the podium citing those two developments as the style in which they're seeking to do. Those two developments were developed by Mr. Roberts, and the success specifically of Muirfield has led him to need more lots. And so what this development will serve as is almost a replacement lots for that. It's an interesting site in that you've got one large, beautiful home on the site. It's just right there, square in the middle. The site plan is before you. Rather than, than tear that down, that will be the central focus of this neighborhood. He intends to use that house as the clubhouse for the neighbors. One of the issues identified in the staff report that I'd like to get to is when you, Cindy, do you have that? If you look at how the street is aligned.
The, the street is aligned in a very intentional manner so that when you turn into the neighborhood, you're staring right at this grand palatial clubhouse. It's the central focus of the neighborhood. It's a wonderful amenity to have for the neighborhood. And if, Cindy, if you'll go back to the pictures, if you look at the, the site plan, you can see what I'm talking about. A very nice landscaped entry as you come in, and then you're staring right at that clubhouse. And if you could cycle through, here are the, the pictures of what the entrance will look like. So wonderfully landscaped, detailed entry. And then if you, then as you go, you see the, the design elements of the actual, the homes and the structures. One of the TEs in our staff report, and I believe it's number three, excuse me, number four, is asking that the entrance align with the Fairview Farms entrance. One of the problems that creates is it kills that site design element. It forces the drive much further to the north, taking away that, that grand entrance, so to speak. So what I asked Mr. Ish to do is to get some site distance requirement measurements, see where we're at, and see what the, the numbers show us. And so what we've done is laid out on an aerial that's going to come before you, our entrance, compared that to the Fairview Farms entrance. You can see it a little bit on the aerial that's in front of you now, but the one coming before you is going to be a lot easier to tell. What we found is we have two hundred and five feet of separation. The other issue is we, we're both gated communities, so the conflict point, there's not as much traffic as you normally deal with, with non-gated communities. Staff, after being presented with this, did respond back to us, traffic staff responded back to us, saying that based upon the distance, we do pass the, the feet requirements based upon the posted speed limit. So I believe from a technical standpoint, we have satisfied site distance requirements as they are needed for this type of interchange. So the other issue is TE number five, and that deals with any access to Northwest one fifty-eighth, shall be for emergency purposes only. And if you look at the image before you, I'm no engineer or architect, but I did my best. The top right-hand portion, you see right where the hand is, a kind of hatched area. There's approximately two acres. The folks that own the property now will be maintaining those two acres, will build a house there, and that house will actually access one hundred and fifty-eighth street. That home won't share access with our neighborhood. The neighborhood will not be able to utilize that one hundred and fifty-eighth. I did visit with Mr. Chambly prior, and I believe that satisfies his concerns and the reason why that TE was there. So we would ask that TE five be deleted, but I would like Mr. Ish to give a bit more detail on the separation requirements.
Thank you, David.
And Ernie Ish with Ish &amp; Associates. Our design intentionally located our entry so that we did have this great view of this magnificent house that will be converted to the clubhouse. We think that's a key element in the design of this project. We do have the two hundred feet of separation, and I would like to point out that there are three entrances into Fairview Farms on Western. So not all of Fairview Farms' traffic is concentrated at this one where we're discussing the driveway sep, or the street separation. They also have a entrance over onto Western. So specifically, we are asking that you approve this, the policies stated should. When we went to the TEs, the word should got converted to shall, and so we're asking that you allow us to continue with the design of this project based on where we have the driveway located. I'll be glad to answer questions.
Have you driven that section of road?
Sir?
How often do you drive that section of road?
My office is about a mile from there. I drive it probably six or eight times a week.
And what speed do you drive in? Truth now.
If I might give you a sidebar, I was carrying my grandchildren down Broadway Extinction, and my eight-year-old granddaughter said, "Grandpa, you can drive a little faster." I'm not a fast driver. But yes, I understand. I've observed the traffic on Western. We recently did the grocery store up the corner of Western, one hundred and sixty-fourth, so we're very familiar with the area.
Well, I am as well, and I see traffic jamming up at Memorial or coming off of the Kilpatrick Memorial, coming home at night. That intersection doesn't work. They get up to the westbound Memorial. That light really doesn't work because it jams traffic up all the way back out onto the, onto the turnpike. Once those people break free, they rush the next mile, only to be stopped at one hundred and fiftieth and Western, and those people are backed up down past the Glen Eagles entrances. And when they get that green light, and I'll call it the checkered flag, off they go. That's a very wide, very comfortable section of road to travel, and I don't see anybody ever going under fifty miles an hour. I consider the offset potentially dangerous, and from a safety standpoint, that bothers me. I just, it's not unlike what Buck was saying about Mustang Road earlier. There are some situations that are simply dangerous. People drive the speed at which they feel comfortable, not the posted speed limit, and I think any traffic engineer will tell you that. So I'm uncomfortable with the offset. Any other discussion, commissioners?
I have, I have a question. How many cars are going to be able to access from the gate and entrance into this community to Western? Is that two cars?
No, sir, there's.
From the gate where, where you're trying to enter the neighborhood, how many cars will access that driveway?
We have ninety feet, which is four cars.
Okay.
If they're smaller cars, there'd be five.
What about the potential of having a decelerate lane to allow us to keep that, that entrance?
Well, you don't have it now, so I mean, that's on the basis of my concern. I mean, if you had a decelerate lane or something like that worked.
But we're willing to, I mean, it's a, it is a PUD, so we can certainly make that a condition upon keeping the entrance there. Because that, that should avoid some of the, the conflict, allowing people to get off of Western.
Yeah, but that would help some of the northbound traffic.
So we're certainly willing to do that if, if it would be the commission's to allow us to keep the, the point of entrance.
We would have no, no complaints with a deceleration lane if it's built in accordance with the MUTCD, and we have the proper taper length and deceleration distance.
I like that idea just because it, you know, I, I remember Dick Coyle talking to us about the need to be able to develop around sort of unique features and to have that kind of flexibility in design and layout, and, and I can appreciate, you know, the effort that they're putting into doing that, but I also am very aware of the traffic issues out along Western, so if, if a decelerate lane would be an option for them and would seem to me to be a good, a good compromise.
We're, we're willing to do that, and Mr. Ish tells me that we've got the, the room for it. So what, what I would propose is delete TE four and five, add a TE to require a deceleration lane.
To the standards that were just described?
Yes.
I'm good with that. I think that's a big improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is, I'm excited about this particular development.
Well, I like the project.
Yes, I love, I love the project. I think it's going to be great. I lived in this area for a number of years, and so I'm very familiar with this property and this home. I think it, with that TE addition, I would move for, oh, elimination of TEs.
Three and five.
Or I need to eliminate four and five, four and five.
And add a new four.
And add a new four with the deceleration lane, move for adoption.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve, approve item forty-five as conditioned, deleting TEs four and five and then putting in a new TE four. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item forty-five is S.P.U.D. nine eleven to rezone fifteen zero four zero, North Pennsylvania Avenue, from PUD ten sixty-nine to S.P.U.D. nine eleven.
I'm Rick Robertson with Global Signs, fifty-one oh five California Parkway, Fort Worth, Texas. I'm here in behalf of the owners of the Chicken Express, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you agree with the technical evaluations? The TEs, do you agree with the TEs? On the, on page eight?
Recommendations.
Of the staff recommendations?
As far as?
No EMD signs, your freestanding signs should limited to be one eight-foot-tall monument sign.
No, that's not what we're here for. We, right now, we're here in, I guess that'd be spud nine eleven, eight signs. We meet all the requirements as far as the, all freestanding signs in the spuds, there'll be a pole sign with the maximum size being twenty-five square feet and have a height of twenty-five feet height.
That's. The, the, the staff recommendations are saying no twenty-five-foot sign, eight-foot.
Yeah, well, if there's no EMC, then I was misled because that's the only reason we're here is for the EMC, EMD.
Well, I won't support your application then.
Okay, then, I guess there's no need in talking about it no more because right now, we're, we've got a twenty-five-foot sign that's permitted for this Chicken Express, and it's a hundred and twenty-five square feet. So I was told that we were going for a spud to allow the EMC instead of just the regular marquee, so I've been misled through my emails and everything from.
JJ, were you, was this the one you were going to check the sign for me?
Yeah.
What, can we find out what PUD ten sixty-nine permits in terms of signs?
It allowed the sign he has proposed, less the EMD. So he's here for the EMD.
Okay, so he can have a twenty-five-foot pole sign under the, under the, under the PUD that exists. So he's got this, you've got this twenty-five-foot pole sign?
No. Yes, sir.
That's not up for discussion. You've got it.
Yes, and it's all.
The question is whether we are willing to approve the EMD portion or not.
Yes, and what John had said at the Development Department said that you would probably approve like a level two rather than a level three, that's more of a stationary type of a sign, and that's all we're here for is just for the approval of the use of an EMD sign.
Well, I would suggest that John not vote for us before it comes to us in the future.
Yeah.
But yeah, I definitely wouldn't want to change what I've already got down on that main road to a twenty-foot sign.
You've got that. The EMD is the question. How do you intend to use it?
What we normally do is they, they turn them off at ten o'clock. They've got automatic settings. They've got all, like, two hundred and fifty-six shades of dimming, so it's not going to be something that's just all in your face. And basically, what they do in this level two, there wouldn't be no animation. Now, John said in the, in the level two that you could scroll, but, or have some movement, but you could not have any, any animation and that type of stuff. But basically, with the way things are now, going to the LED, what they're doing is, we've got other signs with Chicken Express and, and Oklahoma City Mustang and, and the other areas, and what they do is they like to program them from Mineral Wells, Texas, and they will put their specials up, and whatever staff recommends, that's what we will do, you know, as far as the, it being stationary. But they're, if you go north, and I know it's probably not even a PUD, so I'm not, you know, I've been to enough of these to say, not try to say, well, he's got one, and, but further north up on Pennsylvania, they're all up through there. My dentist has one, you know, different people have them, so they're all around in the area. It's just this area, in fact, even the filling station on the corner that's just north of there has the LED stationary, you know, that has the gas prices and stuff that changes.
Right. Commissioners?
You know, we're going to have to move in, to the new world on signs. I, you know, electronic displays are, are part of our world now, so we can't just say we don't want an EMD.
I noticed that in your.
It's not, it's not rational in the digital age, and I'm an old guy, so, I mean, I'm just saying, so we're going to have to move forward on this some way, somehow, because we can't just say, because it's, it's too valuable to, and it's a resource. It's a, it's a, it's a cost-saving to have an EMD to these businesses because they can, in ten seconds versus having some guy standing out there with a long pole sticking a platter. I mean, we got to get, we got to get around this somehow, so.
All right, then, but.
I don't, you know, I'm not saying it's a three or a four or animation and things like that, but I don't think his request is unreasonable. I don't think his request is unreasonable, frankly. That's my position.
What was it that was removed from the agenda? And the last one was sign policy, sign ordinance. It's been, it was on the agenda this?
I think that was an amendment that legal had drafted for some revisions to the sign ordinance that have now been taken back to do work on. So they're just not moving forward. It didn't have anything, it didn't have anything to do with this.
Well, you know, we've.
If you would be willing to put some of what you just told us into the SPOD itself with respect to turning off at ten o'clock, and it, you know, the.
Scrolling.
The scrolling, and also the intensity of it, if that could be made a part of the zoning, then I think that might be a little bit more palatable.
Well, that's an requirement. Now, that the NITS, which is the language for how bright these signs are, be reduced at, what is it, dusk or sunset, JJ? What's the, I mean, I know these signs are to be dimmed at a certain point.
Yeah, there's different lighting for daytime and nighttime.
Right.
Different light levels.
So they'd have to comply with that, that's part of the.
Well, here, the unit we use is adaptive, Microsoft. This thing has two-hundred-and-fifty-six, I can't hardly count, two-hundred-and-fifty-six shades of dimming. So what it's going to do is it's going to go into power resource mode at night. It's got sensors on it. The ones that you're seeing are the, there's a lot of them, they're, and I've been dealing with these LEDs since about two thousand and five, but I've been dealing with these EMCs, EMDs is what y'all call them, but I've been dealing with them since seventy-nine. And what they've got is a lot of these, these Chinese boards, they don't have any dimming. I mean, they're just staying on twenty-four-seven at ten nits. And I mean, my God, you drop by and you run a red light and everything else. And that's the unit that we sell, and this is the only unit that we sell, it actually has the capability of dimming down to anywhere from twenty-five to three nits, three thousand nits, and it does it automatically. When the sun dims, it goes into power-saving mode, so it goes down, way down, because, you know, you don't need as much power as you do when the bright sun's hitting them.
Okay. Any other discussion, and who wants to make a motion? Oh, come on.
Okay, I'll move approval. I mean, because frankly, I understand where he's coming from, but you're going to have to help me here. So you, we want the site to. I agree.
Yeah.
But what are they? Goes off at ten, or?
Yep.
Yeah, could we, could we have it come on like at ten in the morning and go off like at eleven, because that's when they close, is at eleven. Now, if y'all want it at ten, go off, that's when it'll go off.
I don't care if it's a dream.
Well, what are the operating hours? What are the operating hours of this business?
Eleven to eleven.
Fine with me.
Commissioners, would it make sense to continue this, let him put the verbiage together so that we all can look at that verbiage and then come back and make some determination?
He's from Fort Worth.
Well, he's driven up here from Fort Worth.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're close, we'll.
I'd like to go down to Jotees and have a conversation about it down there, but.
Yeah, I would, too.
But.
We come on down, but, you know.
I mean, I'll come up here as many times as I need to. In fact, I love Oklahoma City, because that's where I was raised.
Well, it's up to you. I mean, if you'd like to come back and, you know.
I've got to come back anyway for the council meeting, if this, so. But, you know, they're almost ready to open, so I mean, I'm trying to get this.
Why don't we just have a TE that limits the hours eleven to eleven?
Eleven to eleven.
And add that as a TE now.
Right.
And.
Diminishing at dark.
Yeah.
At dusk.
Yeah.
Now, it's automatically, I can send you the paperwork on the unit, it's automatically going to do it by itself.
Well, we want that in this, we want that language.
We'll write that down.
You're doing it, but we'll put the language in there as another TE.
Okay.
So two TEs, and we're ready to go. Second. Level two? Level two, no animation, eleven to eleven.
Dusk, dimming, beginning at dusk.
Okay.
Got it?
Sounds great.
All right.
So we have to delete the two existing TEs?
No, we were not going to be smart, I mean, but I logged the attempt, Pat. So we're going to, we can delete TE two, EMD signs shall be permitted, eleven to eleven, automatic dimming, beginning at dusk.
Yes.
Yes, yes. That's my motion.
Pat, an answer to your.
What about the weekends?
Well, they're open to eleven to eleven, twenty-four.
It's going to automatically be timed the same, all the time, so it's going to, you know, now, hey, if, of course, they're open, they're open seven days a week, eleven to eleven, so.
Yeah.
But it'll be, it will be set in the computer to actually come on at a certain time, eleven, and go off at eleven. So, in fact, if you don't want it on in Christmas time, we can program it two years from now not to come on Christmas time.
It's my motion.
Okay.
Those vote.
Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your explanation.
And come to town any.
Very helpful.
We're fixing to see her dad.
Items forty-six and forty-seven were continued. Item forty-eight is C sixty-eight forty-one, the final plat of Deer Creek Commercial, located north of Northwest one-hundred-and-fiftieth and west of North MacArthur.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Kendall with Carlson Consulting Engineers in Bartlett, Tennessee, and just here to request approval of final plat for the Deer Creek Commercial. And I'm here to answer your questions.
Well, we had a couple of people signed up for case forty-eight. Let's hear what they have to say, and then we'll go forward. Tommy Turner would be one. If you would please give us your name and address.
Tommy Turner, one-five-one-one-three, Amber Run.
And tell us what your concerns are, sir.
Well, it's not really a concern, it's more or less, if you were to prove it, I would just kind of like to, I'm actually the neighbor, the CBS is going to be built there, and I brought a picture, and I said, I'm actually the house right behind it. I mean, I'm the one that gets to see the dumpsters and the back and all that, which I'm not complaining about all that.
That will all be screened. They'll have to screen this site.
That's, I've never been to one of these, ever, first time.
Well, welcome.
So I don't even know what I'm thinking, so I don't even know how this really goes, but me and my wife, our kids are gone, we actually built this house here with, you know, with privacy, how quiet it is, and it's really great neighborhood. So we were just concerned, there's a lot of trees. We wanted it, it's going to, it covers the street and all that, we just want to make sure that all of those going to stay there.
The trees appear to be a common area amenity to your development. They are not on the property that is in question here, so they can't.
Touch none of that.
They can't take the trees down, or, it's not, not on the property they're concerned with. It's really on your neighborhood's property.
And then.
Well, I think some of them will probably go.
Well.
I mean, you know, to be fair, we can't, we can't say that no trees won't get cut. You understand?
Not really.
Well. If they're, if they're on their property, they can cut them down, okay? Just so you get that.
Consideration is what we're looking for.
Right.
Consideration, and a lot of these little notes you'll see is from my wife, she wrote them down. I'm told to do that. You know, we're concerned back there, I mean, there's a lot of security lights and stuff like that, it's dark, we're, we actually have hormonal irons, and we don't want a lot of lights. We're concerned about twenty-four-hour security surveillance, do they put them in the back? Are we going to be on video all the time? Oh, that was my wife's.
Yeah.
We don't know. I mean, I hope there's surveillance, we also have, we're concerned about, are they going to be, CVS, don't get me wrong, we're all excited about it, we're happy as we be. But I mean, my job is, is I'm in a thing called DSD, it's direct sales routes. I've been through Coca-Cola for years in DSD, we're concerned about a lot of route trucks coming in the back. Is there, do they have in the works to put any kind of barrier walls, or any things that are going to be, where we don't see all that? That's, we're hoping they would take consideration, that we don't see all the Coke trucks, Pepsi trucks, bread trucks, all that, because I know from experience what these vendors do behind stores. I've done it all my life, and there's not a lot of good things, but, I mean, they were legal, okay? Just want to print that out. Just want to make sure we all know that. But that's what we're hoping, is they put that in consideration. Please look for the neighbors behind us, if any trees can be put in, any walls be put up, something that can block it, where we don't have to see the dumpsters, the lights, all that, we welcome, we're glad they're coming there. But that's all we're looking for, is that. We're just hoping that in cars, we all know CVS, you do the drive-throughs, every, we all know it, you pull around, we don't want cars sitting there in the headlights, my house that's right there is facing right at me. I mean, there's a lot of trees, with the trees, so these are the things that, which we're glad it's coming in. I know you're going to prove it, but that's what we're asking, is just for consideration of some of these things that we're looking for.
Well, they are required to do site-proof screening against residential properties, so there will be a wall, a fence, or something that is site-proof, so that whatever you might see in the, you won't ever see dumpsters theoretically.
Okay.
Because the ordinances require that they be screened.
Man, I went to a CVS today, and it was totally different, and I went through the drive-through, and that's when I started thinking, my headlights was right on people's property, and I'm thinking, I don't want that. You know, that was in the city, it was real close, so those are just things we're hoping that the development.
And I would hope CVS wouldn't take down any more trees than they have to.
Yes.
On their side.
Yes. So that's all I had.
And they're supposed to also screen the lighting so that it goes down and not off their property. That's another, that's another part of current city ordinance.
Right, that's good. And of course, we all know there's security cameras, there's got to be using the back of all of them, we're just hoping they're just not, we're being stared at the whole time. So those.
They're going to be more concerned about their property than what goes on beyond the trees.
Well, you never know, there's a lot of things going home, but where this is going, where our house is, there's a creek there.
Yeah.
And they're going to want to public video, there, things happen everywhere. So that's what my thoughts were, and I was just hoping y'all would have that down, so consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
First time.
Jeff Nokes, or Nokus, however. Jeff, tell me how to pronounce your last name and give us your address.
Jeff Nokes.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty-nine twenty-four Northwest one-hundred-and-fifty-first Street. I wanted to thank you all for your time today. I have some of the same concerns, obviously, we're concerned about our property values being affected by the businesses so close, noise pollution, light pollution, obviously. Another concern that we have is Northwest one-hundred-and-fiftieth Street, west of MacArthur, is a two-lane street. It is riddled with potholes, every time it rains, there are eight or nine new potholes there. It's not a very safe street for, you know, for a lot of traffic that we assume will be going through that area. So we would, you know, respectfully ask if that might be, someone might take a look at that and maybe address that issue. As far as the trees, I understand that some of the trees are on the east side of the creek, in fact, a lot of them are, so if those are removed, there will be quite a, quite an opening through there, which is going to change everybody's view, obviously, pretty massively. And I'm kind of here, along with Tom, representing the people that live backed up to that greenbelt. And we're just trying to see if there's some way we could work with CVS to kind of minimize any disruption or any inconveniences and work together on this, because obviously, it's an advantage for the neighborhood, for Deer Creek, to be there. Also concerned about Area Two, I had heard it was an office, possibly an office complex, I'm not sure of anything definite on that, but I was curious about the zoning as far as the height of buildings being allowed in Area Two. Is that a one-story area? Would that be two-story buildings, three-story buildings allowed there?
You know, actually, a lot of the issues that you have raised, and the other gentleman raised, are really issues that are more likely to have been dealt with at the planning stage, and I think if you will get the zoning stage, if you'll get with the folks in planning and get a copy of the PUD, the zoning that governs this tract, you may have some answers to your questions with respect to things like whether the trees are protected, or, you know, whether they can be removed and that kind of thing. Those are really not the kinds of questions that we normally deal with at a plating stage, they're more likely to have been dealt with at the zoning stage, and since this is a PUD, maybe they, maybe they were. I don't have that plat in front of me, or that PUD in front of me.
I did go over to the.
I'm guessing staff doesn't either, but, but if you'll contact them, I'm sure they can get you a copy of it.
And that's at the city planner's office there?
Well, we can talk to JJ right after the meeting and get his contact information, and he'll be happy to work with you.
All right, very, very good. Is it, are we entitled to find out when planned building is scheduled to begin for the CVS?
We don't know.
We don't know, and they're not obliged to tell us.
Okay.
They can tell you when they're going to open if they'd like to.
All right. Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. I don't think we have anyone else signed up. Do you want to respond to anything, can you respond to anything that you heard?
Sure, sure. Obviously, the lot is zoned correctly, and we're not doing, you know, we're not putting anything in there that doesn't need to go. Can appreciate the concern about the buffer, the creek buffer, and you are correct, all the trees are really outside the property, and we're not going to touch those. There's a little improvement as the pad is built up to clean up on the property side, right along the edge that he's concerned, that they're concerned about. So we're not taking any of that natural screening and vegetation out, except for an area, if you look at the track one, that's where we're building. The actual building is probably seventy or eighty feet from that property line they're concerned about, anyway. But we're running a sewer line, we're connecting the sewer up at the northwest corner of track one, through and under the creek, and connecting to the sewer line that runs along that creek on the subdivision side. And obviously, what we'll do is minimal, you know, it's just a sewer line, so we're, we'll do minimal, minimal clearing that we need to do there, just to get that working place. Other than that, that vegetation, that tree line is pretty thick. You know, provide, and also the north side provides a pretty thorough, you know, effective screening, so that's, we're not touching that, just to confirm that. As far as it being a neighborhood, I think CVS has gone to, I'm not the architect, we're the civil designers, but I did manage to look at what they had proposed as far as scale. I know some of the concern was it's going to be this big gigantic monolith of concrete or something like that. But they've gone to great extent to break it up, to scale it down, lots of different, lots of different materials, very stacked stone, some wall panels, it looks very small scale, so try to minimize that.
It's far enough away from the residences that that's not going to affect them.
Quite, quite far. Now, as far as screening, you're absolutely correct, all the, they won't see dumpsters, they won't see any of that, so it's all screened. So let's see, as far as the lighting, and you're also correct, you know, the engineering just requires all the illumination to be within the property, so I think, I think they'll be plenty satisfied that we'll, we'll do what we need to do to provide a pleasant experience, so. You know, I have no idea, so that's beyond this phase where I'm concerned, anyway.
We just cut his cord.
Yeah, I can't address that at all.
JJ, when would PUD ten twelve have been adopted roughly, or do you have any idea? I mean, within the last five years, or?
About then, yeah.
About that. So whatever you're going to do on that corner of CVS, you've got to comply with what it is we did on the commission to impose the planned unit development ten twelve. You've got to do that. But one thing you said about the sewer going under the creek, you know, you just don't drill a hole under the creek, you've got a, you've got a clearance going on. And I would be, if I were a neighbor, I'd be watching just exactly what it is that you've got to dig that sewer, and what it destroys as far as the vegetation outside your property. And that's for the people that live there, just make sure. And also, look at PUD ten twelve. And also, look at PUD 1012. Ask JJ about that, because those are the rules that, that we adopted for that corner some years ago. And that's really what guides CVS and what they do. And we hope that CVS is a good neighbor and does things even better probably than we agreed to in 1012.
I would hope so.
Okay, all right.
You know, something that I think might be helpful, I have found it to be helpful in other circumstances, is if you were to give these gentlemen a phone number they can call instead of calling us when things go wrong, when the lights are shining in their windows or whatever, if they have somebody that they can actually contact who can do something about it for them, that would be lovely.
I'm going to approve for adoption. That is? We have a motion and a second to approve Item 48. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
One more case.
Item 49 is KC 6836, preliminary plat of Redstone Ranch located north of West Britton Road and west of North Mustang Road. Does require a variance to the sub-regs.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crichton Toll, representing the applicant. And this obviously is an application for a preliminary plat on 320 acres that, as you can see, lies on the north side of Britton Road, between Mustang Road and Piedmont Road. The site is currently an entirely zoned R1 right now. And as you've noticed in your staff report, our preliminary plat is in complete compliance and full compliance with the current zoning. And also, in addition to being in compliance with the zoning, you'll notice in your staff report that we're in compliance with your comprehensive plan as well. There's currently a planned designation of urban low, and it is currently designated that way because there is a municipal water source available. It's on the site as well as sanitary sewer services. And we also have urban level fire service. There's a fire station a mile and a half up the road. And then, obviously, we're providing parks internal. And also, if you'll notice on the design of our subdivision, we've tried to implement most of the policies that are in your comprehensive plan. If you, if you'll notice, we provided three street stubs to the north, trying to provide the connectivity that your plan speaks of. You'll notice that there's a large common area that runs from the north all the way to the south. That is a, it's really not a FEMA-designated floodplain, but there is a drainage way through there. So, we've done what we can do to include that in a common area to help preserve that riparian zone. You'll notice that as far as cul-de-sacs, dead-end streets on 320 acres, you'll notice that there's only, I believe there's four, four cul-de-sacs, all of which are just really short in distance. We don't have any other dead-end streets except for the street stub, and that's, you know, obviously, the only way that we can accomplish that. You'll notice that we provided common areas, not only in the middle, but you can see how that we've got the common area kind of in the east portion as well as the west, that we can provide amenities and kind of make those located so that we'll have, obviously, a large common area in the center, but then more amenities, like I say, in the east and west. So, those are some of the policies in your plan that we've tried to implement. As far as the TEs, if you look at them, there are eight TEs total, of which we're all, we're in agreement with all of those. And if you'll notice, there are five of those TEs are just standard boilerplate TEs that you're going to see on every preliminary plat. TE number three is a variance request. And if you read that, you'll notice that it's really not a variance request that we are necessarily asking for. It's just a fact of naming streets. And if you'll notice on the east quarter section, those streets are kind of in a semicircle or something. And I think the staff has decided that as opposed to numbering those streets, it may be better to name them. And so, they've asked that we request the variance for that. So, that's the only variance that we're requesting. In terms of TE number seven, all the entrances that you see have been checked for site distance. All of them passed. The very main entrance off of Britton Road in the very middle of the site, I think, working and with the traffic management folks, if we move that entrance 40 feet to the west, I think it's probably a little better scenario. So, we obviously are willing to do that and plan on doing that. And then, on TE number eight, it simply is just, we've got one intersection in the entire preliminary plat that it really is really close to a 90-degree angle, but it's slightly off. And so, that's, that's not much of an issue for us, just to correct that, to make sure it's 90 degrees. So, if you look at that from a TE standpoint, we're in agreement with all of them. We do ask for the one variance. And I think if you look at this subdivision as a whole, you'll notice it's, it's in compliance with the zoning. It's in compliance with your comp plan, with most of the policies in your comp plan. It's in compliance with the subdivision regulations, with the exception of the, with the street names. So, I don't think that on 320 acres, you'll find a preliminary plat that has a much cleaner staff report than this. And we think it's a great plan, and we're excited to get it started. And like I say, it's a, it's a plan that obviously on 320 acres, we're anticipating being a 20, 25-year plan. And we kind of think that most likely, the one of the first phases, it's going to come in off of Mustang over in, you know, Mustang-Britton or potentially the entrance you see off Mustang Road, but most likely on the east, because that's where the current infrastructure is located. But again, we think it's a great plan. We think it's a well-thought-out plan, and it's consistent, conformance with all of your regulations. And so, we'd ask for your approval.
Kendall, we do have a number of people signed up, so we'll hear from them.
Okay.
And Pat, use your microphone. Can you brief us on what you said in the pre-meeting about Britton being on the 2007 bond issue?
150th is going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
From May, east of there to the turnpike, it's going to be widened four lanes.
Okay. Doesn't affect Britton, though?
No, it doesn't affect Britton.
Okay. All right, we've got five people signed up, and in the interest of being efficient, we would ask that if someone before you has addressed your issues or concerns, that you not repeat what we've already heard, because we will take it all to heart. So, the first person is Kevin Jaloff. And those of you who've signed up, it would save a little time if you move forward, so when we call you, we can.
Kevin Jaloff, I live at 10,001 Piedmont Road, which is half a mile north of Britton Road, and it's right across the street from the development, about where you see the entrance coming out. I am a lifelong resident of this area. My parents still live in the house that I grew up in. I have lived here for the past three years, was very fortunate and blessed to be able to buy 10 acres. We built and moved in in 2013. Three areas that I would like to address, and hopefully, I'm not stepping on anybody else's speech, are areas of concern for safety, areas of concern for the plannings that you guys have on the website for planokc.org, and then also plans for versus just simply desire. The plans for safety, I was five years old, remember watching my father direct traffic at a corner of Britton and Highway 4, directing traffic as a helicopter landed because of a wreck. I was a kid, I was five years old, I watched, there was a sign on Wilshire, just south of it, that called for the expansion and the widening of the road 30 years ago. It was actually supposed to be widened before we moved in. My neighbor to the north, who's going to speak, was actually going to wait until he moved in before they built. Thankfully, he did not, because it's still not widened. I would argue that it's one of the longest stretches of road in the Oklahoma City metro area that does not have a stop sign. That's currently 45 miles an hour. That's one of the most dangerous roads that I know of personally. I've lived in that area all the time, and I've never seen accidents anywhere else but here. I've seen a kid die. I saw the, at the ambulance lights, and I came out and I saw that there. I drive by his picture, I drove by his flowers for the years that he was there. He was a high school senior. There was just a road, a wreck up the road at Hefner and Piedmont Road. I was told it was a fatality. I can't confirm that. I've seen other accidents there in the daytime, I've seen other accidents there in the night. It's not safe. You can say, well, we're not going to filter it to Piedmont Road, we're going to put it on to Britton and Wilshire. Have you driven them? I'm glad I don't have dentures, because they may fall out. The issue that I have is they're very unsafe and they're very, very dilapidated at best. Morgan Road was the only one that could compete. Recently, the plan for that one was to scrape it, put tar and gravel. And that goes to an Oklahoma City metro area. That's the answer? Is that the best we have? The second question I have is, as brought up by the petition, when you go to planokc.gov, and I didn't realize this was out there, when you look at the mission statement and the vision of what they have, and you begin to look and specifically look at Sustain Oklahoma City Number 11, it begins to go in and say, and I'll read it verbatim, it says, "We will preserve rural character and grow efficiently by managing the growth of urban development. Without careful phasing of infrastructure, extensions and development in the other areas, we will continue to use existing infrastructure inefficiently while incurring the higher cost of extending its facilities prematurely, create land-use conflicts with existing farms, change the character of land for people who built homes or made other investments based on rural character." I have lived here my whole life. The six houses that just got built on Piedmont Road is the most activity that's happened in 38 years. That's it. There's nothing else that's changed. I've driven these roads day in and day out my whole life. You go on to say, and the, the vision is, "We will reinforce the character and quality of existing rural development and provide the ability for some very large lot developments in some areas, which are unlikely to receive infrastructure in the short term." When are the roads going to be fixed? To me, that's part of the infrastructure. I agree, there is a fire department that's close by. We're blessed to have it. There are things that are there, but the infrastructure of Highway 4 is inaccurate. It's already been brought up in the council, though, on Western Avenue, that people speed through, and they get complacent and things like that. What are you going to do with seven miles of driving? That's 45 miles. You've already brought up the concern for Mustang Road. You ought to try to get out on my driveway onto Highway 4, going to work and coming home. It's not safe. We hold up traffic. And I don't think just an entryway to get off is still the safest answer. It's not a safe road. You go on to say in policy SU 44, it says that you'll preserve existing rural residential character while pursuing optimal use of existing infrastructure. Policy 45, you ensure that development in rural areas is consistent with local design and does not detract from the open character of the landscape. Go back to, nothing has changed here in the past 38 years, besides the exception of our neighborhoods, so to speak. When you go on from a standpoint of that, from the safety, from the preservation, I do want to bring up one point. It's interesting, because the stones throw away from this neighborhood, across the road where I live, everything has to be five acres. But we're going to go over here, and we're going to put four houses per acre is going to be about the average. That's a lot of houses. My last concern is this need. Do you really need it? As brought up by the petition, there's already 101 houses for sale at the 1,500 to 2,000 square foot range. Do we really need 1,200 more houses? If you knew the pulse of the place, and if you knew the heartbeat of the people, people would love land. They would love to move on to acreages. So, I went on Zillow last night, typed in land, as much as I wanted to spend. There's only six properties in Canadian County in the 73099 district that pop up. Six. Two of them are commercial, and they're actually in the municipalities of Yukon, so I kind of kicked those out. The rest of them are between 70 acres, give or take, all the way up to 80 acres. So, it ranges between $650,000 to $1 million. Nobody can afford that. If you want to meet a need, if you want to decrease the traffic and potentially make it safe until you can expand the roads and fix the roads that you have, I would argue that instead of putting in 1,217 homes, and there's rumors of potentially apartment complexes on a place that's rural, you meet the needs of consistent with your vision, which is maintain the rural character. That's what we want. One of my neighbors is already talking about potentially moving if this changes, because that's what we moved out there for. So, you maintain your vision, you decrease the traffic flow to a place that's already unsafe, and you provide a need to the people, that community, that really want land between five to 10 to maybe 20 acres. You can accomplish all those goals without having to do this. That would be my argument against this.
Thank you. James McDaniel.
What do we know about the roads out there? Have they been, have they been placed on the bond?
It's bad, Ryan.
Lists for redevelopment or for remodeling, whatever you'd issue to roads?
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking staff that question. What do we know about the roads? Okay, thank you. And I guess the one, one thing that I would say about that is, you know, you're sort of preaching to the choir on most of the points that you've made with respect to residential development and kind of outlying areas of Oklahoma City. But we are not in a position here to decide that that road will be improved. That's just not part of our function. There is a, a traffic commission that you can go to about stop signs if that's, I wasn't quite sure from the comments you were making, whether that was something you were actually advocating, that you wanted to see more stop signs. But there's a place you can go for that. It's not here.
No, that's not one of the points that I'm asking for, because it's a fantastic flow of traffic, because who, who likes to stop at stoplights or stop signs? Nobody. So, it's a fantastic flow between Piedmont and Yukon. I'm not advocating for more stoplights and things to slow traffic, I've been worse. But on planokc.org, it talks about maintaining the infrastructure. To me, part of the infrastructure is roads.
It absolutely is.
That's the vision of the county council.
And I understand that.
And have you driven Britton and Wilshire from Piedmont Road going into Oklahoma City? I used to laugh, because I never understood, my parents always drove in the middle of the road. What? You're a horrible driver, Dad. And as you get older, you drive in the middle, because that's where the potholes are. And that's what you do on Britton and Wilshire Road unless you're passing traffic. You drive in the middle of the roads. My son probably thinks I'm a terrible driver. It's been that way for forever. And you're going to increase how many more cars?
And I'm not arguing with you about any of those things. I just want you to be aware, we are not in a position here today to decide that those roads need to be improved.
And I'm not either.
So, I'm asking whether we know if they are in fact scheduled to be improved.
And Curtis has gone to check that.
But even in a perfect world, if every road was fixed and there were, yes, sir?
Do me a favor, don't talk over her.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, we can get this moving, okay?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
I, I do want you also just to be aware that, that the proposal that's in front of us, and, and, and it is, you know, it's a lot to take in. But, but I was struck by the fact that they're talking about a 20 to 25-year build-out for this amount of, of residential development. So, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Are there any neighborhoods that take 25 years to build?
Oh, yes.
300 acres?
Yes, I, I would say, based on my experience, there are neighborhoods that take 25 years to fully develop to the extent that they're talking about here. I would definitely say that.
And do you agree that this maintains a rural feel? This project?
I don't know that I have to agree.
What I'm just saying, that's, that's not my plan, that's not my vision. That's Oklahoma City's.
Right across the street to the east is what?
To the east of where?
This particular proposed site.
D.R. Horton.
To what?
D.R. Horton Development. Then, to the east of that is Summerhill Development. To the south of that is actually a pit where they dig dirt, so nothing will ever go for the next two miles.
Part of what you're concerned is, is a broad policy issue. The people that you need to talk to and the people who need to hear the concerns that you have is, is the city council, because they ultimately have a lot of control over exactly how these policies are carried out going forward. I mean, we make a recommendation to them, and then they, then they decide on zoning matters. And that's what we will do, either for or against, or modifying what's presented here. But then, they make the decision based on the recommendation that we pass along to them. And so, that is one of the places where you also want to be heard.
I might, I might add to that, too, that the policies that you cited from the comprehensive plan for rural areas apply to the land that's designated to be rural, and the comprehensive plan does designate this area as urban. Even though right now, it's not developed out as urban, it's still intended to be urbanized. So, we typically don't pull those policies for rural areas when we're reviewing an application that's within an urban area.
Mr. McDaniel, if you'll give your name.
James McDaniel, 12320 West Britton Road.
James McDaniel, 12320 West Britton Road. Residents across the intersection of Britton and Piedmont Road. Our farm's been, it's a state farm, been there in the family's seven generations. I've lived there 40 years, watched all of the accidents. Thirty-three, listen to me, 33 accidents from Wilshire to 122nd in one year. One fatality. Thirty-three. How many is that per mile? That's the condition of that road. And I know, I understand y'all's standpoint, but I just want you to understand where we're coming from. Now, are y'all aware that there was another plan in 2006? Were any of you here?
Yes, we're aware of it, and the new one's the plan site.
And we also fought that plan. They also wanted to develop the northeast corner, because that's the only place they have sewer and water. They don't have access to sewer and water for the rest of the plant. They have to go across somebody else's property. Two different property owners. It's another thing. The gentleman just said, "We have three sewer or sanitation lines and water holes." That's where they come from. So they don't have it yet.
Well, they'll have to bring it to the site if they're going to develop it.
Pardon me?
They will have to bring it to the site if they're going to develop it. They know that.
I understand. Okay. Now, my next thing is, and I know we can't control that, we don't like the density, which I think we'll discuss. Arkansas, more anything is cosmetics and safety above all. And the plan in '06, we came and spoke together with other people, and I think that developer agreed to put lights up at Britton Road and Highway Four with turning lanes. Now, understand, this widening of Highway Four has been going 30 years. I've been to every meeting, DOT, Oklahoma City, and everything. So nothing's been done. But even if they build in the northeast corner, and they come south to Britton Road, it's going to increase traffic. Traffic is already heavier on Britton, even though it's so rough you can hardly drive it. But it's increased there. That intersection is a killer. And that's one thing we're willing to, and you might tell me where we can go from there, you know, but we are concerned, and that's what we're doing here, and we'll be at the council meetings, too. And we appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Kevin Mullins.
I'm just reiterating what I'm.
Okay, thank you. Travis Johnson.
Travis Johnson, 11320 Northwest 96th. I'm also current president of the Summer Hill HOA Association. So, I mean, if I stand up here and I say I'm completely opposed to progress, I would be wrong. I live in Summer Hill. I moved there two years ago, almost three now in December. But I've got a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter that plans on going to Summer Hill on entry. Currently, it's over capacity, and I know this has no bearing necessarily on the folks in front of me. But my biggest concern with this size of a development is, how do we accommodate that if we're not proactive? And that's kind of what I see with this development and how the surrounding areas are going when it pertains to Oklahoma City and separation with Yukon schools. And we talk about roads, I'm not going to reiterate that as well, but they talk about putting parks into this. You know, a thought that's come across my mind is if they expand Suri Hills Elementary, we may lose that park. And then there are no parks in the area that anyone could literally have their kids go and play in. So these would essentially have to become a park for public use, which, based off the way that they're laid out and the streets that are around them, and the fact that there are connecting streets from the development entering it, where all of those common areas are, there's not a place for those individuals to park if they wanted to play with their kids there. So they would literally have to walk, which is fine, but they're currently on Mustang Road. Even with the South Fork development, there's no crosswalks for that to happen. And that is a major road, and if I'm not mistaken, that is still a 45-mile zone. Other folks have talked about just environmental stuff. I'm sure they've done the assessment, but that's part of my concern, too, and the fact that the roadways are as bad as they are, and how is storm sewer going to be run? Where is it going to go? To the adjacent lands, the property that others own? How is that going to affect it? And I'm not sure if that stuff that has been presented to you, I'm sure it has, or gone through other commissions, but those are our concerns as far as communities around for this property development. And we know it could be a 20- or 25-year plan, but the real question is, maybe it takes that long, maybe it's faster. You know, currently, there are more individuals right now that are not buying houses and renting. So if that's the trend that happens in the next five years, 10 years, we had a very cordial conversation in private about a week ago with a lot of the homeowners around the area and the builders, and they literally reiterated that they are going to build this plat to this state at this point in time. However, if they plan to down the road, if the market is asking for it, they're looking at, and they would not be opposed to, going back and trying to change the plat here to a different type of multi-dwelling apartment complex, whatever literally fits the bill of what they can sell, which is very concerning for all of the, you know, the owners in the area and the other developments, because all of those other developments, with the exception of a small portion, are single-family dwellings with a certain four-units-per-acre-type build-out, and to put a large development on there as far as apartment complexes can really change the dynamic of that setting. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Michael Flannery. Okay. Anyone else who, have I missed somebody? Did you sign up, or am I missing a sheet?
We had someone that supposedly signed us up electronically this week, hit by a deadline. There were three of us that were going to speak. Actually, I thought we were going to be first in line.
Not familiar with an electronic system for signing up, but you're welcome to.
Anyway, first of all.
Go forward. Tell us your name and address.
Mark Hader, county commissioner for District One, and just here on behalf of my constituents. I don't know if you recall, when did we approve Plan OKC? Was that March or April?
You were here then.
Yeah, anyway. And at that time, I was concerned, because I was asking, what can I take away from this back to my constituents and tell them that Oklahoma City is going to, you know, do on their behalf in the next 25 years? And I remember, Mr. Yocel, your response was, you know, clever. It was, "We're going to help you preserve your rural lifestyle." I mean, you know, we're going to leave you alone. This doesn't look like preserving our rural lifestyle. And I understand your point that you made earlier, that you're the planning commission, and I realize that the city council is the one that makes the final decisions on things, but you do make the recommendations. And I would like to go back to the items 41 and 44, and some of the concerns. You talked about safety. I want to reiterate all the things you guys have said, because they stole all my material. As someone who is responsible for building infrastructure, and I'm already working with both Councilman Stone Cypher and Councilman Greiner on things that we can do jointly to help improve things, so I'm here to be a partner to get things going. But the things that have been stated are very true. To throw another 1,200 homes, and I'm not against development, I'm a guy that knows that this is coming, but it doesn't really fit in with this document. We spent five years, you know, creating, and I don't know how many dollars we spent to come up with it, and this is kind of counter. And I go to, as Powers, your comment about, this is a lot to take in. I mean, when you're talking about the type of area, I'm not one that would say, you've got to hold that to five-acre tracts or 10-acre tracts, but, you know, you can look at adjacent to the communities that are in this picture here, and those are normal quarter-acre lots, and these are actual in the size of that. So I guess you guys have the ability to, you know, make a recommendation, and for those same reasons that have been expressed here, 33 accidents in one year. I mean, if we went back and studied, you know, five or 10 years' worth, how bad would it be? How many more fatalities might we have had? And if we're going to put, whatever that is, it's going to be maybe 5,000 to 6,000 people over time on the same roads, and like that, I want to be an advocate, but we should be building the infrastructure out before. And I realize that's not your decision, but I would encourage that to be part of a recommendation, maybe, is either reducing density some, or, and also, yeah, there's a water line and sewer line available on the east side, but there's not really that infrastructure available either. Anyway, I don't want to belabor points and all that one other person talked about.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your service, because, you know, I get paid to be a commissioner. You guys, I think, probably get per diem to come up here. So I appreciate you guys for what you do.
We'd like to have a per diem, but no such luck.
I do think maybe it wouldn't hurt to point out, I hate to be the one that's in this position, because I sound like I'm so pro-development, which I'm not necessarily, but we're not here on a zoning case. This is a preliminary plat approval. This property's already been rezoned, R1. So the idea of it being five-acre tracts, or two-acre tracts, or even one-acre tracts, that decision's already been made. And there's nothing that we can do to impact that here today. What we're really here to look at is how that development is going to be laid out. So I'm very familiar with this area. My mother lives at Suri Hills, and in fact, I used to live in Suri Hills. So, I mean, it's astonishing, the development that has occurred out in this area and the rapidity with which it has occurred. And, you know, it is a lot to take in, but we're not here with our finger in the dyke today. There's the idea that we can change what kind of development is going to occur out here today. It's not what's on the table.
I'll be honest, again, my point to be here is, I realize, probably coming, I mean, it'd be nice on our part to recommend maybe a little more green space, or, you know, something, I mean, some minor changes to kind of rein in the size and scope, so to speak. But it's really more, and again, I know this isn't necessarily your responsibility, but I would reiterate what, you know, the document, the Plan OKC document said, you know, even a little poll off to the side note was, 64% of residents support focusing city resources on developing areas where infrastructure already exists. Again, the infrastructure here is not up to the task, and, you know, we can, it would just be nice if we had, you know, commitments from the city, having worked for municipalities, county level, state level, for ODOT, been all the seats on the table, and a lot of times, when something like this comes along, there's negotiation that, yes, we'll like that, that'll help us, but as was said, either traffic signals, widening of, at least at intersections for safety, things like that, on city's behalf, to make sure that this is a win-win for everybody. Anyway, I've had my time.
Thank you. Sure.
My name is Brandy Reynolds, and I live at 12435 West Britton Road. I've come today to speak in opposition for approving this preliminary plat today. I am the one who started the petition that I think you all have received prior to the meeting. And as of the meeting today, we had 392 signatures from residents in the area that oppose this specific plat today. I have two reasons that they haven't talked about yet. One is, on the same lines of infrastructure, it's emergency responses. Currently, we are served in this area by Oklahoma City Police Department. However, the closest station is at Hefner, I'm sorry, 122nd and Hefner Parkway, which is significant distance away. The presence of the police department is minimal in this area, because we are considered rural. The Canadian County Sheriff's Department also serves us, but they are located in El Reno. According to Emsa, the response time to this area is anywhere between five and 25 minutes. The standard response time for Oklahoma City is six to seven minutes, but Emsa has said that because we're considered rural and considered a mutual aid agreement area, that they are not bound to abide and cannot abide to that response time. So therefore, a burden is on the fire department, which there is one fire department, Suri Hills, which serves this vicinity. Excuse me. The addition of the 1,200 homes, which I know is over a long time period, is going to put more of a burden on this type of infrastructure, on the emergency responses. In the area, just as you spoke of, to the east of Mustang Road, there's already five developments under construction at this time with, I tried to drive through and count all the lots, but I got stopped at about 200 lots that were still available for sale. And that does not count the approved plat earlier today for the second phase of South Fork, which is just off Mustang Road and Hefner. So the availability of homes is there. There's building going on already that's going to increase the demand on the infrastructure. And this, even though it'll take time, is just going to keep building on the stress from Oklahoma City to support our community. So because of that, it asks for you to take these items in consideration, as well as the 392 other people that have signed opposing the approval of this plat today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not? Okay. All right, come on. After all, you signed up.
Yes, I did. I'm, sorry, I'm Kevin Mullins. I live at 9801 North Piedmont Road, just west of where this development's going to dump all its drain water and everything of that nature. And as Mr. Jolliford said, I've already started looking to move what I thought was my dream house, because of the poor nature that it's going to be out there. I can't trust my two five-year-old boys to live across there, not have any regulation on the road, two-lane highways, no shoulders, and I know this is not the form. And I appreciate you telling us that. You know, that is an awful lot of houses, even over 25, well, over 25 years. I'm a former school teacher. I understand the crowding of schools. I pity the teachers that'll be overflowed with the students in here. With that being said, I really wish that you would consider not approving this measure.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. That's my next question. You were going to see if you could find out what kind of schedule existed for any improvements?
It is not scheduled on the current bond list, the 2017 bond list. The word that I got from the personnel is that it would have to be added to it, but it's not scheduled to be improved currently.
So it's not in the existing bond issue and not scheduled, or not planned for the 2017 bond issue either?
No, sir.
Okay. And of course, that bond issue hasn't been put together nor funded yet, but...
Just as you're mentioning that, even as commissioner, I've been involved in trying to make sure that State Highway Four project moves forward. And honestly, no matter who I talk to, it's a different story as to where we are. And I don't know if this is the forum, or you staff-wise can help, but do we know where we are on widening State Highway Four?
Okay.
I'm sorry, do we know where we are at?
On the widening of State Highway Four. Because, I mean, I think that would address a lot of the safety concerns, because that intersection at Britton will be included in that. But, you know, Yukon having financial woes and trying, between both cities trying to figure out if they want to put money in over by Frisco Road or not, I mean, it's a moving target.
And we don't know here, so unfortunately, that's not anything we're...
That just might give these folks some assurance that, at least infrastructure-wise, there might be hope in the near term.
I have a few things I'd like to say, if I could. We really appreciate all of you taking the time to come down here today. And one of the hardest things about this job is the stuff that you really can't do. You know, you've raised a lot of important and accurate points about the quality of the infrastructure out there, that we have very little control over, zero control over. The impact on the schools that we have no control over, the availability of property and housing already out there. And that's, you know, we are a body that's created by statute, and there are only certain things that we're allowed to take into consideration in the decisions that we've made. And a lot of times, things that just seem to make plain old common sense are not on that list of things that we're allowed to take into consideration. We are in the process right now, as a city, of putting together a new bond request, and items like infrastructure, like these roads, are definitely items that need to be on that list. And I would really strongly encourage you to use your time and energy to impact that bond request. And it's a really difficult thing, the system that we have, and I've been thinking a lot about it recently, where you're trying to look into the future, 10 or 12 or 15 years, and think about what you're going to need in terms of infrastructure, based on where you think development is going to occur and how fast. But the amount of development that has occurred out in this area has so far outstripped the existing infrastructure. I mean, there's not anybody up here that would argue with that. And again, our ability to restrict development as a proportion to that infrastructure's quality is really quite limited. So it's not that we don't appreciate what you're saying, it's not that we don't agree with what you're saying, it's just that our ability to take action, to bring those two ends into alignment is limited.
So Kendall, what, what traffic studies, requirements, what did you, what did you have to do associated with this development?
Since earlier this year, obviously, one of the things that we've done, because we've faced this issue now for many years, about, okay, here's the issue everywhere we develop. It's here, it's everywhere in town. And you all have heard from over the fact that we always stand up here. And the thing is, is it's not only these people that will live in these houses that are driving on the streets, but it's all the neighbors to the east, to the north, it's all of the folks that we've just heard from. So who, whose part does it become and what's their obligation? So one of the ways that we've addressed that, obviously, was, you know, council adopted the impact fees earlier this year that go into place in January. And, you know, we can argue about whether it's enough, whether it's not, but what I can tell you is, you know, there's residents that are living there today that, except for other methods, bond projects aren't participating, but you'll generate neighborhood of a million dollars, something like that, through, just on the street impact fee from these folks, which if you look at what it takes to actually make a mile for lanes, you're looking at 1.3, 1.7 million dollars to do that. So I think if you look at that, plus over the course of 20, 25 years, that it's not all at once. It filters in, but you look at the generation of that income from the impact fees, you look at what other potential bond projects may be out there, that's the method we've come up to mitigate for these sort of things. And I can be corrected on this, but Piedmont Road, I'm fairly certain is State Highway Four as well. So obviously, there's some considerations there that you've heard that really fall under the guidelines of ODOT and what they perceive as issues that need to be addressed on their highway. So I think if you look at all of those sort of things, again, we're paying the impact fees. You know, I think as far as condition, Mustang Road and Piedmont Road are not necessarily in bad condition. Britton Road's a little worse. But again, keep in mind, it's 20, 25-year project, we'll be paying the impact fees, and there'll be enough money to fix some of these things. And hopefully, there'll be some bond projects that will come in and do some things as well. So I think, you know, as a commission, I'd just remind you again that it is a preliminary plat. It's currently zoned entirely R1. It's fully in compliance, not only with the designation of the plan, but obviously, you can tell by the design of the plat that it's inconsistent with, or it's consistent with the policies of your plan. So I think when you look at all that, in fact, like I say, you all approved on the consent docket this morning, adjacent plat just to the north. So it's an area that's developing. There is water and there is sewer. Obviously, that plat you approved north is one that we're working on as well. And sewer is extended through it. Our developer on this side's already got the agreement in place, so we have water and sewer. And again, we have adequate emergency response. It's within urban levels. So I think if you look at all that, again, I know it's big, I know it's 320 acres, but you know, we could have done it into quarter sections and made it look a little bit, but the truth of it is, is contractually, in the way that we purchase property, we like to get the entitlements in upfront. And we know that it'll be a 20, 25-year plan, but it makes sense. It's in full compliance, we think it's a great plan, and it's what's happening in this area. So with that, we had asked for your approval.
How many houses is going to be in your first phase?
I couldn't tell you that specifically. I mean, typically speaking, just from an engineer, and I haven't even visited my client about that, we see anywhere from 50, 70, 80, sometimes 100 lots. You see the preliminary plat, or the final plat you approved today had 125.
Do you ask, do you estimate on absorption rate?
As far as what's out there today? I do not. I mean, yeah, there's market studies out there, but like I'm saying, it varies. I mean, you get different products and different things. So I couldn't tell you what the absorption rate is. But we can tell you that it's an area that obviously you all and council has adopted in a plan that says, hey, this is an urban growth area. We have utilities and big investments that's made in extending utilities, we have the fire station, let's make the most efficient use of those utilities, and that's the densities that you get here, which is completely consistent with what's going on around it. So I think if you look at all that, again, you know, it conforms, it's compatible, and again, we had asked for your approval.
Well, a lot of what you said, I agree with in terms of just how this is designed and so forth, and the fact that it quote conforms to the R1 zoning that it is subject to. What bothers me and has bothered me for years is the impact on people who are there who already are suffering because the infrastructure isn't satisfactory for what they have today, never mind what we're talking about or looking at going forward tomorrow. And I think that's frankly a disservice to the people who are there now because we haven't met adequately their needs. And I think that's a planning issue where we frankly don't beat the test. And that's my thought.
Let me kind of key on what the chairman just said, and also what Janice was saying. You're right. You know, the, I mean, you've got an R1 zoning on 320 acres, and I'm really curious as to how that ever happened with just a blanket, whatever it is, out in the, you know, goat pasture. But you've got it, and you're right. You know, you've got water, sewer, you don't have police, at least what one of the protesters said, we don't have police. But you don't have roads. And when you said you're going to seg, you're, this is going to be a segmented thing. Okay, you're going to do 100 lots, that's the first phase. There's trucks going up and down these roads with potholes, and they're not improved at all. I can imagine what that does to the surrounding neighborhood when you have construction trucks, et cetera, going back and forth, back and forth. And, and I think that we do have a bit of discretion to listen to the people that are protesting for the reasons that they've protested. The density, the roads, the infrastructure, you know, where am I? And also delay in bond issues coming up to improve those roads. And I think we do, as a commission, have the discretion to look at an application like this, 1,200 lots, just plunked down in the middle of inadequate roads for that. So the infrastructure is not there, and I don't think it's compatible with the area. And so I can't support the application. No matter, you know, you've got 1,200 lots in the middle of nowhere, and it's all R1, I've got sewer, water, et cetera. If it's not compatible, and if you don't have the roads, I would approve this if these bond issues come about that would improve these roads, et cetera, then you have enough infrastructure to deal with 1,200 lots. But I can't support this application because of it...
What would make it not compatible? When we say it's not compatible, there was a consent docket item that had 3.6 dwelling units per acre, that's R1 zoning immediately north. Look at the density and the subdivisions to the east. I think in terms of compatibility, that's even reflected in the traffic report...
But you're adding another 1,200...
Well, but that's on two quarter sections. You have to understand that it's generally the same density as what is, it's just a matter of...
There's not enough roads. That's my, there's not enough.
But here's, here's my other argument. We have a state highway on the west. Is the road in good condition? I think the answer to that is yes. We have an access off to a state highway that, in my opinion, is in reasonable and good condition. I think Mustang Road, because here's the problem. Depending on where you're at, and we come in, who's to say which road is bad and which is not? Now, listen, I'm not trying to argue common sense, but what I am trying to make an argument of is quantitatively, what measure do we use? So if we say, hey, we're not going to approve this plat because the roads are not consistent, then at which point does that become defined as this one's okay, but this one's not? There was an argument made, and you heard a protester earlier on 150th, he talked about potholes in the road, and the road being in bad condition, but obviously, the plat got approved. And my argument is this, is we've been around this multiple times. I understand it's an issue, we're sympathetic to it. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that Britton Road in particular is in good condition. Do I think you can drive on it? Yes. Do I think there's development going on in the area? The answer is yes, it is. But it gets down to how do we philosophically handle that as a city, as a community? And I'm thinking that we are talking about a philosophical argument that goes beyond this application. If you look, I work personally, obviously, as part of the dialogue, but obviously, many of our clients were part of the developers' council when we, and that's how the impact fees come about, is look, there's not a quantitative measure. What do we do on this one when we say, hey, there's a problem here at the intersection, but what about the other one down there? And how does that traffic affect something three miles away? And so what we've at least decided to do is we're going to take a step forward, and those impact fees come in on January 1. And that is the mitigation that at least we have come out of the gate and make in terms of this subdivision. So I, I think it's, I understand what you're saying, but you do understand that the way that we have proceeded, and now we do have at least something in place to address that, where our folks will start paying money immediately. Now, it, again, it transpires over 20, 25 years, and I'm sure that those impact fees are going to continue to go up as well. But it's going to generate enough money to fix those streets. Now, it's, obviously, it's phasing in, but at least it's something that this subdivision will be part of mitigating those issues, whereas the ones around it even have not. So to me, that's the fair thing and where, how we've addressed it, and the procedure and the practice that we have in place today. Now, I'm not saying it's perfect, but at least that's what we've worked together as a community, I think, to come up with.
Well, I think we've heard enough. I've talked 360 degrees around the case at this point.
Right.
And...
I mean, I'm mindful of a couple of things with respect to this plat. Number one, I agree with everything that everybody has said, frankly. I mean, I, I agree with everything, that the roads aren't good, this is in, this is in my ward, I'm familiar with this area, I've approved these. I'm also mindful of the fact that this case is vaguely reminiscent of one that we dealt with about a year, two, year and a half ago, where there was a state highway on the west, there was a road that was substandard in the north, there were some problems with density that we didn't particularly care for with that particular case, and we denied it. It went across the street to the district court, and it came right back because we didn't have, based on our mandate, unfortunately, as we've said, our mandate and our job as a commission, we did not have a rational basis or a reasonable basis for denying that case. As I look at the application in front of us, I'm, I'm clearly looking at it as, and from a land use standpoint, there is one variance in this with respect to a street naming. This is, this is, the lots are right, the layout, I, I don't think this is what I'll have 25 years from now when this is fully developed. I think there'll be some changes because things happen when you get on the ground, and some of the preliminary, the final plaits may come in, and there may be some variances there. But I, I can't quarrel with it. And so I'm, I'm struck by this, this collision, but I'm also struck by the, what, what our job is. And this is, this is in compliance with the plan, it's in compliance with our regulations, we've got water, we've got sewer. I hope, I hope that these roads and the infrastructure out there gets better, but I don't know on its face a reason that I could propose to deny this application, other than maybe I don't like the fact that it's in an area that has bad roads. But I, I would say, direct your attention to Pats Ward at north of the Kilpatrick on Rockwell on Council, out at 164th. It's, it's the same thing, but we summarily approved those, have approved those plaits because we had no land use reason or no reason that this commission could deny it. And so I don't see this one as being any different. I'm sorry, Buck's got the same issue in his ward, we all do. All the wards that touch outlying areas have this same issue, but it doesn't, it's past our mandate, and I, I wish there was something we could do about it, I really do, because this is in Ward One. But based on the application in front of me, I'm going to move to approve the application, uh, excuse me, the variance? You want the, you still want the variance?
Just for the street names, staff's request.
The staff request?
Staff requested it. I have to ask for it, but it's just for street names. They think that it'll be easier for all parties if they're named as opposed to numbered, which is what the code requires. Makes me no difference.
Okay, so you don't care?
I don't care, but...
How about we go ahead and leave our TE in there? We delete that TE? JJ, how do we deal with that?
We think we need, you need the variance so we can name those east-west segments of the street.
Okay. I'll move the approval of the variance.
Second the motion.
Okay. Motion to second to approve the variance, TE one, cast your votes.
I will move the application.
We have a motion to second to approve the application, cast your votes. And it's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The remaining items have been continued.
Anything today? Planning Department?
What are we going to do about the...
Do what?
The electronic messaging signs. We, we approved one today with certain restrictions, but what I've seen since I've, the short time I've been on the Planning Commission, is turning down EMD signs up and down.
It's, I guess since they're PUDs and SPUDs, we take them as they come.
Okay. And so we will, they're not summarily disapproved? Under certain circumstances, we'll approve them?
We did today by agreement, so...
So if the, if the applicant puts certain agreements in his PUD document or SPUD document, why, we'll go ahead and approve the signs? Or we at least have a basis for approval?
Well, I think you'd also have to look at the facts, you know, where the surrounding is and how it is, how they may affect surrounding areas, too, would be one thing that you could consider.
Sonic's got similar signs every place you look. Their searches have...
Yeah, their small message boards, yeah. Those have generally gone in where there hasn't been any kind of a conflict or objection. So I think setting is one of the conditions, I mean, where, where it's located, what's, what surrounds it. There are areas where there aren't any EMDs at all, and you, and we don't necessarily want to begin to introduce them en masse, but you look at North May Avenue...
Lots of them.
Or North Penn, and some of it, they fit in some places. Development Services, I think? Municipal Counselor? Anyone else? We're adjourned. Oh, Janice, I asked for... The first thing I did was ask for Commissioner's comments. Commissioner's comments, Janice.
And, you know, I, I have recently, again, as it happens with great frequency, come up against some issues that are related to code enforcement. And, you know, with some regularity, we tell people that come down here to speak to us about various things, that what they've really got is a code enforcement problem. And it occurs to me that when it gets right down to it, I may not understand quite as much about code enforcement and how it works and whether it works as I think I do. And I would really very much like to know more about that. And I wonder if we might get those folks to come and speak to us, either at a study session or actually here, and, you know, give us some insight into how that process really works.
Have you ever heard the term complaint-driven?
I have heard that term. And, and I've been made, I've been known to make a few complaints myself, so I, I really would like to get a better feel for, you know, what I was saying today about the hardest part of this job being the things you can't do, it really is true, and, and that's one of those areas. You know, when we have to tell people that, that what they're bringing to us is not something that we can do for them, and what they need to do is go deal with code enforcement, I'd like to have a little better feel for how that, how that plays out.
I have an idea, and I probably should have spoken when I thought about this with Planning Commission, but every year, we've been conducting training sessions in December for our committees and commissions. And Planning Commission's roles and responsibilities and the things that you consider are unique among those commissions and committees. And we're thinking that when we hold our training session this year, that we might devise some breakout sessions so that we could explore some of these things, talk to other city staff, talk to members of, you know, what other decision-making bodies do that relates to the decisions you make here. So those ideas can be incorporated into that half-day retreat that we're planning for December. We also wanted to get a poll that Randy will be sending out, or maybe Sarah will be sending out to you, about some other study session topics that we need to cover between now and the end of the year. I know that we have a lot going on right now. We have the CIP coming up, that's going to be an extensive study session. We have a Traffic Commission and Planning Commission joint study session and workshop coming up, so we have a lot of really important discussions. Anytime that you have anything, any needs or concerns or questions... Anytime that you have anything, any needs or concerns or questions, or you want to know more information about stuff, let me know, and we'll try to consolidate those so that we can get together and cover those, so we don't have to do study sessions every other week. I'm also handing out some background information that has been requested over the past several months. This is a recap of the Planning Commission roles and responsibilities, and the tie-back to different references, either in state statutes, our codes and ordinances, and our comprehensive plan, it's a memo by our Assistant Municipal Counselor with a document that has a lot more verbatim type of references from those. This is the type of material that we would give to new commissioners in their packets, but I wanted to make sure that everybody had a fresh copy of it.
So this is one set, so we're passing these out?
Right. I'm passing them.
All the way down to Pat, then?
Okay, I'll get them to you, I think we might be short a couple. Thank you.
To keep them together.
This is just...
Oh, this, this is just one. Take one, pass them, I guess is the way to do it. If there's any left over, we'll send them the other way. She didn't bring enough, I guess. Yours is, well, that's one piece, there'll be another.
I'll email them to you. Yeah, I'll email you the other one. There wasn't enough, extra.
Those are the same ones, aren't they? Hand them back. Just keep, send those that way. At the moment, she didn't bring enough for handing out both. Well, we're adjourned, folks.